Testing, testing. Can you hear me? All right, we'll be starting shortly. All right, one minute till we're live. I'll count down for you and then I'm gonna go silent at six, so you can just follow my hands until we go live. Thirty seconds. Fifteen seconds. Here we go, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five.
Okay, we are live. Good morning, everybody, and thank you for being here, and thank for those that are watching on KPTS and YouTube. Want to call the meeting to order. This is the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. Want to recognize that we've got a pretty good crowd here, but also want to out of respect, recognize Mayor Kessler from Claywater. Hayesville, I'm sorry. Ah, yeah, sorry about that. And also Jack Haslip, a city council member from Derby is here. And we also have a couple of MAPC people. Bob Aldridge is here. Thank you, Bob, for being here. And Joe Johnson from MAPC is here.
Rick Coleman from Derby.
And Rick Coleman from Derby. Thank you for pointing that out, from Derby City Council. Okay. With that, Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be led by Reverend Jill Sanders Shali. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
I would invite you to be in a spirit of prayer with me as I share a prayer from Archbishop Desmond Tutu. Oh God, oh holy one, you are our mother and father, and we are your children. Open our eyes and our hearts so that we may be able to discern your work in the universe and be able to see your features in every one of your children. May we learn that there are many paths, but all lead to you. Help us to know that you have created us for family, for togetherness, for peace, for gentleness, for compassion, for caring, for sharing. May we know that you want us to care for one another as those who know that they are siblings, members of the same family, your family, the human family. Help us to beat our swords into plowshares and our spears into pruning hooks so that we may be able to live in peace and harmony, wiping away the tears from the eyes of those who are less fortunate than ourselves. And may we know war no more, as we strive to be what you want us to be, your children. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our umbrella, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the prayer. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole. Welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. May is a busy month in regard to honoring county employees, so we, as you've seen with proclamations come through over the last week. We also have a couple different highlights we're gonna do over this meeting in the next. One of them is, May 7th through 13th was National Correctional Officers Week, and we put together a short video to honor these folks.
I help supervise and monitor juveniles in this 24-hour facility.
I assist in supervising the youth as well as the staff.
Maintain the facility, make sure everything is running smoothly, make sure staff and residents are safe.
Just interacting, building a rapport with the people, trying to, we're trying to help them to become better people. I mean, I enjoy what I do. I enjoy being there for people and being able to help get people to a better place in life.
I've met a lot of different youth throughout my two years here, working with them and trying to help them succeed and change their life for the better.
I like interacting with the youth, trying to help them with coping skills, life skills, so when they potentially get released that they're better in the community.
Been able to meet a lot of awesome people that have helped me gauge the kind of person I needed to be, to be a better person, whether to be a better husband, better father to my kids at home.
I am proud of that I've worked with the county for 15 years. I've promoted up from a line staff to a corrections supervisor.
Corrections workers have a stigma of being aggressive or not there for the residents or clients. And here at JDF, we have a passion for working with youth, and we take it very seriously.
We're always willing to listen to them, and we just want the best for them.
If we didn't care about these youth, we wouldn't be in the facility.
We are here for the best interest of the clients, and when we tell them something that's usually to help them, it's not to hurt them.
And it is one of the things that I enjoy, and something that definitely changed my life for the better.
We are very thankful to have people in our corrections departments, both with the, at the jail and in corrections, which are two different things. Those are very caring people that we're glad to have on staff. May is also Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. This month recognizes the contributions and influences of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to the history, culture, and achievements in the U.S. We've compiled a short video to highlight some of those employees as well.
Hi, my name is Cindy Lee, and I'm with Environmental Resources at Public Works out of Sedgwick County. I've been here for five years.
My name is Sheila Tockington-C. I've been with the county since August of 2020. I'm like fourth generation Filipino Chinese. And then when I came here, I guess you could add, you know, Asian American to that now.
You know, like Asian Americans, we've come such a far ways from like when we came over. Personally, for me, I came over in 1992. I was eight months old. Having to assimilate to a brand-new country with your parents not speaking English, you're kind of placed in a very special situation where you kind of have to help your parents assimilate, and then, you know, of course, they're working their tails off to make sure that they're taking care of you.
I've been in a country for about 17 years. There are a lot of things that still a culture shock that I didn't know.
Seeing the struggles that they've gone through and the sacrifice that they made, I don't feel like I have an excuse but to do well and to do better, to take all the opportunities that are given to me. If they can work that hard with three kids in a new country where they don't speak the language, I really have no excuse.
It's the seeing that you're making a difference, and you're able to, in your own little way. I know I am like very, very small, a small pebble in the entire comp care family, but I try to do my part. That's, I think, the rewarding part.
We have a couple more videos coming next week, so I will have those for you to view, and just a little tag for that. For today's Sedgwick County good news, we were recently awarded the Gold Level Breastfeeding Employee Support Award from the Kansas Breastfeeding Coalition and its Business Case for Breastfeeding Program. It recognizes businesses that provide a high level of support for breastfeeding employees. This award also firmly establishes Sedgwick County as a family-friendly employer concerned about the health and well-being of its employees. Congratulations. Next, I would like to invite Lynn Packer, Director of Public Works, to the podium. He's going to share about an award that he will receive next week from the American Public Works Association Kansas Chapter. Lynn?
Morning, Lynn.
Good morning. Thank you, Nicole. Good morning, everybody. I'm very proud to share with you that our 63rd Street Bridge over the Arkansas River, you may remember, we closed that down and restricted traffic for nearly a year with emergency closures. That was nominated and awarded the Project of the Year for the Kansas Chapter of APWA. And we will, our application has now been forwarded on to the National APWA for consideration. So next week, we, us along with our partners at Benash Company, this consultant and dominoir construction, will all receive this award. And basically, what it does is it recognizes the collaboration between the engineer, the owner, and the contractor for the work they did to be able to complete the project. So this particular project is in the category for emergency repairs under $5 million. And we're very proud of this project and its outcome, and to be, you know, it's just icing on the cake to be able to get the award. So thank you very much.
Congratulations, Lynn.
Yeah, sure.
I just want to make, thank you so much, Chairman. I just want to make a comment on that particular project. That was a... I was very concerned as a Commissioner of District Five about the importance of this bridge. And the Commission thankfully supported a way to keep the traffic flowing during the repairs that were made. I know that had we not made the repairs, the cost of this bridge is astronomical. It's unbelievably expensive to replace this bridge, and it has a life. I understand now with the repairs that have been made, we've extended the life significantly, and we saved a tremendous amount of money. The taxpayers kept the traffic flowing the entire time, and it actually came in about almost equal to the initial estimate. So it just really reflects skill on the planning, the execution, and the importance of what Public Works does by keeping these roads open that are so critical to the community. So I say thank you. I think the award is very well deserved. A good job.
We appreciate that. We worked, I think our traffic control plan changed at least four times during the course of the project. And that's just, this type of a project with this type of traffic, it's kind of what you need to do. And our contractor and design consultant worked with us to make that happen, and it was a great collaboration.
Thank you, Lynn. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Okay. Nicole, just thank you for the videos and my compliments to you and the comm staff for the great job you do on filming and communicating pictures, everything you guys do. So it's a good communication tool that you guys are sharing on behalf of the whole county, Sedgwick County employees and commissioners alike. So thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments? I don't see any, so Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we received one email on the public agenda by the 5:00 deadline. I'll just comment that I've asked the Clerk's office to please forward that to the appropriate department for being addressed. With that, is there any other questions or comments about the emails we received by the 5:00 deadline? I don't see any. Madam, motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. And on the public comment, the beginning of the meeting, we don't have anybody that signed up, so we will go to the next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of April 5th, 2023.
Commissioners, if it's all right with you, I'd like to combine item A and B, which is a motion to approve the minutes, regular meeting minutes of April 5th and April 12th.
On second.
Motion and a second. Are there any other questions or comments about those minutes? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item C, proclamation recognizing the city of Hayesville as a Purple Heart city.
Right. And I've asked if Commissioner Lopez would like to read the proclamation that Hayesville's in her district. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Chairman. This is in the second district, but I wanted to ask Commissioner Dennis to read it, as Dennis is a veteran, one of our two veterans on the board, and came to the city council meeting and the celebration to celebrate Hayesville for this. So Chairman, or Commissioner Dennis, if you wouldn't mind reading that.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to read this. Commissioner Lopez and I both attended the meeting at Hayesville City Hall and also at the VFW, because it is very, very, very important to recognize our veterans, especially those that have given so much to their country. So it's my honor to read the following proclamation. Whereas Sedgwick County and the city of Hayesville have a long history of supporting military personnel, veterans, and families of those who have served their country through the armed services. And whereas the mission of the Military Order of Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among combat wounded veteran members and their families, and promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, to make sure that we never forget. And whereas the city of Hayesville appreciates the sacrifices of the Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms, and believe it is important to acknowledge them for their courage and show them honor and support that they have earned. And whereas the city of Hayesville worked with the Military Order of Purple Heart 558 to create a plan for establishing Hayesville as a Purple Heart city and express Hayesville's commitment to Purple Heart veterans. And whereas Hayesville Mayor Russ Kessler proclaimed the city of Hayesville as a Purple Heart city during the May 8th city council meeting, and on May 15th, the city unveiled the signage to visibly establish Hayesville's location as part of the Purple Heart Trail of Roads, Highways, Bridges, and Other Dedicated Monuments. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby commend the city of Hayesville for its designation as a Purple Heart city and recognize its commitment to showing appreciation for the sacrifices of Purple Heart recipients. Commissioners, you've all had an opportunity to hear the proclamation. A move to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And here to receive it is the mayor of Hayesville, Mayor Russ Kessler. Thank you for being here today, sir. Good morning, Mayor Kessler. Congratulations.
Good morning. I deeply appreciate this on behalf of the city. So as a veteran myself, retired Navy and worked for the Air Force for 11 years, and as a civilian, I work for the Army currently as a civilian for the last four years. And military veterans, very proud of them, and they are close to my heart, especially Purple Heart recipients that were wounded during, or, you know, were wounded during wartime, or... I just deeply appreciate it, and I appreciate the county being represented at the meeting where I did the proclamation and as well at the VFW. I believe we had close to 130 people at the VFW, so it was definitely a packed house. So since then, a couple other mayors have reached out to me to see how I became a Purple Heart city. So I definitely gave them the information, and I urge all cities in the county to check it out and become a Purple Heart city, and I will definitely share whatever information I have, and I understand the county is also looking into it possibly. So definitely appreciate that. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. There's a couple of comments here. Commissioner Al?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, for getting this completed. You did a good job of leadership, and I appreciate your service to the community, both in Hayesville and what you do for veterans in the past and currently. So thank you for your service. I do agree that the county needs to move towards becoming a Purple Heart county. We talked about this a little bit in the past, and we just need to get it done. So I think Commissioner Dennis and myself especially have got the fire underneath us to get this completed, and I think all Commissioners probably do agree as well, but I think we're gonna move forward as a, hopefully get us to be a Purple Heart county. I do recognize the city of Derby, you know, we did the same thing a few months ago, and we had a huge celebration, and I got to be there to experience all of that and hear some of the speeches and really celebrate, if you will, the service of our veterans in Derby. And I apologize for not being at Hayesville. I intended to be. My schedules got conflicted, and I apologize. I really wanted to be there. My heart was with you, and again, I just want to say thank you for making this happen. It's really, it does show great leadership on your part. Appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
And Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And Mayor, thank you very much for being here today. I know that you're a Navy veteran, and I appreciate your service. I appreciate all the service for every man or woman that has served our country, worn the uniform. In addition, Sedgwick County is very proud to host McConnell Air Force Base here, so we have a number of active-duty servicemen and women that are serving here today. As Commissioner Howe said, we've already tasked the staff to come up with whatever procedures we need to go through in order to be a Purple Heart county. Right now, what his word I heard was that there are only two counties in the entire state of Kansas that are Purple Heart counties. We certainly want to be the third county to do that. But the award, and the Purple Heart, was actually first awarded by General George Washington. And he, if you look at the Purple Heart Medal, it has a purple ribbon on it. It's got a medal hanging from that ribbon that's in the shape of a heart, and it has George Washington image in the middle of that. And the reason for the Purple Heart Medal is, first of all, to recognize those that have given all to their country, the United States of America. They, every, every single serviceman or woman that dies in battle is awarded the Purple Heart posthumously, unfortunately, but we still need to recognize them. In addition, every combat wounded veteran, man or woman, in the United States military that does come back, thankfully alive, is awarded the Purple Heart Medal. So it is something that is, should be recognized by all of us, that these people paid the ultimate price. They actually gave their blood for our flag and our country, and I thank them very much for their service. And as we come up on Memorial Day at the end of this month, remember that day is to recall those that passed in honor of our country. It's not just a three-day weekend. So please, when you have an opportunity, this Memorial Day that's just coming up in a few days, remember those that gave you the freedom to be able to sit in this room and to enjoy the life that you enjoy today. So again, I appreciate Hayesville. There's only like six cities, I think, here that have been recognized, but thanks to Hayesville, thanks to Derby, Sedgwick County is not gonna be far behind you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
And Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor, for coming today. I really appreciate it, and thank you for your leadership on this and getting this done for Hayesville. I know every time I leave my house now, I see all the banners, and it's just, it's really exciting that we're doing so much to honor our veterans. So thank you for your service. Everybody here today that's served and everybody who's watching appreciate everything that you guys have done for all of us, but I just want to congratulate you again and say how exciting it is to see those banners every time we're driving around town. So it's great to see you.
Thank you.
Okay. And Russ, thank you, Mayor Russ, for all the comments that you're receiving, and appreciate your leadership, and it's enjoyable. I mentioned on the Stephen Ted radio show earlier this week that congratulations to you and the city, but also it's rewarding, there's 20 cities in Sedgwick County, and to see Hayesville and Derby and Mayes and all the things going on, Park City and Bel Air. There's a lot of regional strength for our whole county, other than it's broadened way beyond just Wichita City. So my congratulations to you and all that you're doing.
Thank you.
For the region. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, quick photo?
I'd like to say one thing real quick.
Sure.
Colonel Vogel, 22nd Air Force Fueling Wing Commander at McConnell, he invited me along with around 20 civic leaders to go to Dover Air Force Base last week. with around 20 civic leaders to go to Dover Air Force Base last week. It was a two-day trip, and we toured the mortuary services there. Of course, that's where remains fallen heroes. That's where they come into the United States. And it's just, it's a, it's a big process there. If you ever get a chance to go out there, and if you're able to take a tour, it just makes that much more meaning to a Purple Heart recipient. So it's just, it'll, it'll bring tears to your eyes, just going through there. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Okay. The proclamations usually don't take this many minutes, but this one was well worth all the comments, and it's very valuable. So, next item, please.
Item D, proclamation declaring National Public Works Week.
Okay. Ask Commissioner Howe if he could read this, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proclamation says, whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs such as streets, highways, bridges, facilities, drainage improvements, environmental services, household hazardous waste, and noxious weed control. And whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure and service that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Sedgwick County. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these amenities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is especially dependent upon the efforts and skill of people, of public works officials. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens and civic leaders of Sedgwick County to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs and respective communities. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 21 through May 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week in Sedgwick County, and call upon the citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in public works, and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we adopt this proclamation.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other questions, comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, to receive the proclamation, we have the award-winning county engineer, public works director Lynn Packer.
Hey Lynn, congratulations again.
Thank you very much. I just want to say, this year's theme for the Public Works Week is connecting the world through public works. And basically, every public works professional strives to improve the quality of life for the community they serve. You know, it leads to healthier, happier communities. Public works projects and staff help keep the community strong, providing infrastructure, transportation, water, wastewater, stormwater management, emergency management, first response, solid waste right away. We kind of touch it all out there. And they are what makes our communities a great places to live and work. So I definitely appreciate you and everyone else celebrating the quiet work all of these professionals do to make our lives better. So thank you.
Okay, congratulations again. Commissioner Howe, did you have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a further comment. I always talk about the four big pillars of Sedgwick County government, what we provide to the community, falls into four categories. As public safety, we always say public safety is number one, and it has to be. We love what public safety people do, and it's a huge system of services that all connect to each other. But the second in that set of pillars is infrastructure, and that's all the things we just mentioned in the proclamation. The third, of course, is human services, and then the fourth is quality of life. And so, infrastructure is a pillar of Sedgwick County. It's a huge part of our budget. It's a lot of what we do. And being the director of all that is just an incredibly important position. And it's not just roads and bridges, it's all kinds of other things, too. I am very, very proud of what you do, and I would say, compared to every other county of the state of Kansas, and even all the other taxing jurisdictions in our community. We have the best roads and bridges of all of those. I am very, very proud. We are top-notch infrastructure managers. It all comes back to you and your leadership. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much. We definitely agree with that. I'm very proud to have worked here for 23 years, and yeah, I'll put our infrastructure up against anybody. We've worked very hard on that.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lynn, please pass on my sincere thanks to everybody in public works. We maintain 600 miles of road out there. We maintain over 600 bridges, take care of the roads in the wintertime. It is a huge task, and I appreciate what you do. But I want to go back in time a little bit to two of the directors of public works before you. A guy named David Spears, who had a quote that I steal all the time, but I always credit him. But he said that, that basically that public works and the transportation is the mother's milk of economic development. And I believe that, and we're going to hear about it here on agenda later today. We're very proud that Charlotte Pipe and Foundry Manufacturing is here with us today, and we're going to, part of that is, they need a rail line, and they need some turn lanes to be able to get in and out of their new facility. And again, that's economic development, and that's why I think that quote is very appropriate today. It is the mother's milk of economic development. So I appreciate everything that you all do. I appreciate what our staff does, especially for the things that are coming up on our agenda here later on today. But please pass on our sincere thanks to public works. Appreciate it.
I will do that. We are very fortunate to have a great staff in public works that makes all this just happen each and every day. So very thankful to leave a group of professionals like that.
Okay. Thank you Lynn. I'll see you. Other comments? You want to do another picture? Lynn, we need your picture? We'll get our steps. Okay, thank you. Congrats to everybody. So, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, Item E, accept the resignation of Amy Cox from the First District Citizens' Advisory Board.
Yes, Mr. Papun?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. It's all right with the board, we'll just take Items E, F, and G together. They all involve accepting the resignation of various citizens. Item E, we're accepting the resignation of Amy Cox, who's Commissioner Meitzner's appointment to the Citizens Advisory Board. Item F is accepting the resignation of Nicole Helms, Citizens Advisory Board member of Commissioner Lopez. And Item G is the resignation of Bob Robertson, who was formerly the Payne Township Trustee. So we'd ask all, ask you to accept these three resignations.
Okay. And I want to extend my thanks to Amy Cox and to Bob for their service, and also obviously to Nicole Helms. But with that, I'll make a motion to, to accept the resignations of Amy Cox, Nicole Helms, and Bob Robertson.
Second.
So motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item H, resolution appointing Randy Soba to the Payne Township Board as trustee.
Mr. Papun?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, again, County Counselor. If you remember, the city of Wichita, by ordinance, Sedgwick County created the Food and Farm Council, which among other things was intended to increase local food production, reduce food waste, increase access to healthy food, among other things. This particular appointment is Commissioner Beatty's appointment, and he is recommending that we appoint Randy Soba to this board. I'm sorry, it's Commissioner Meitzner's appointment.
Okay, and also, I think you're quoting Item I, and we are on Item H. But we can take care of it.
Well, I have, okay.
Covered Item I.
I screwed this up royally here.
That's all right.
Okay.
But I will, I will, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Jump to Item I. Well, I knew it was Commissioner Beatty's appointment to food.
Okay. So we'll take care of Item I. Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Mr. Papun. And to be clear, what we're doing here right now is we're appointing Kenzie Kirkland to the Sedgwick County, Wichita and Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council to represent District Four. These advisory boards, these councils, they're incredibly important for a lot of reasons. Advisory, commitment, and those that serve in these capacities, it really is service, and they really are representing our community in a big way, and doing their part. Kenzie is, manages our Grow and Growers ICT program over at our Sedgwick County Extension Center. When I was looking to find someone that would fill this role as my appointment, she was recommended by three different people, saying, listen, she's got to have a voice, she's got to be at the table. She's incredibly talented and incredibly smart. And when three different people recommend someone, you listen. So I'm incredibly grateful that Kenzie's willing to serve in this capacity. I think you're going to be a wonderful voice on this council. So Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, appointing Kenzie Kirkland to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council.
I'll second that. Thanks for your nice comments. Being no other comments, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Kenzie is here today.
Okay. Kenzie? Be sworn in, please. Kenzie, apparently you have a lot of fans that, yeah, that's good.
Good morning Commissioners. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Wichita-Sedgwick County Food and Farm Council. So help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you Commissioner Beatty, and I just want to say I'm really excited for this opportunity, and really excited to bring my voice to the table and represent small farmers. I really think they're important in the local food and farm community, and I'm really excited to have a voice in improving our food and farm system, and the local food system in Wichita and Sedgwick County. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenzie.
Thank you, Kenzie, for agreeing to serve. So again, for the record, that was Item I, and so we will go back to, next item, please, which would be, go ahead.
Item H, resolution appointing Randy Soba to the Payne Township Board as trustee.
Okay. Mr. Papun?
Commissioner Mike Papun, County Counselor. Okay, as you recall, on Item G, or Item, yeah, Item G, Bob Robertson resigned as Payne Township trustee. Item H, by statute, you appoint the replacement, and it is upon the recommendation of Commissioner Meitzner that we appoint Randy Soba to be the Payne Township Board of Trustee. I think the term, he fills the unexpired term of Mr. Robertson, so that'll end early January 2025, I believe.
Okay. Paperwork's all in order, and everything's good?
Everything's good. Resolution.
Well, thank you. That's in Payne Township, and Bob did a nice job. I think he's relocating out of the township, and I'm so glad that Randy Soba has agreed to step in. He's done a little homework on it, and we've had a nice visit about that, and so it was easy, easy for me to support nominating Randy Soba to fill this term. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve Randy Soba's appointment.
Second.
This motion is second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries, and Mr. Soba is here.
All right, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Payne Township Trustee. So help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Randy. Thanks for serving.
Thank you Pete. Appreciate the nomination, and I'm ready to get to work.
Okay. Thank you for that lengthy, very lengthy acceptance speech. Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item J, resolution appointing Joe Johnson to the Sedgwick County Nuisance Appeals Board.
Mr. Papun?
Yes, Chairman Meitzner, Mike Papun, County Counselor. If it pleases the board, we can take Items J, K, L, M, and N altogether. These are the appointments to the newly-created Nuisance Appeals Board, Sedgwick County Nuisance Appeals Board. If the appointments look familiar, it's because we have basically co-opted the appointments that you've all made to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. Item J is the appointment of Joe Johnson to this board by the recommendation of Chairman Meitzner. Item K is the appointment of Joshua Blick upon the recommendation of Commissioner Sarah Lopez. Item L is the appointment of Bill Johnson upon the recommendation of Commissioner David Dennis. Item N is resolution appointing Bob Aldrich on the recommendation of Commissioner Ryan Beatty. And Item N is the appointment of Chuck Warren upon the recommendation of Commissioner Jim Howell. All the resolutions proper form. As you approve the resolutions.
Okay. Thank you, and all five of these people have been individually suggested for appointments, and I'm familiar with all five of these names, and these are stellar contributors in our community in a number of ways. And thank you for them all to, to be a part of this Nuisance Appeals Board. So I'll make a motion that we approve all five as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Beatty?
Yeah, I would just echo what the chairman says. It's people that are willing to serve in these capacities. You are doing a tremendous service, not only to the county, but to your entire community. And Bob Aldrich, who is my appointment here, already serves on MAPC, and he keeps trying to retire, and we keep calling him to service. So he answers the call every time. So I just want people to know that, and Bob, you in particular, that those that are serving in this capacity, you are appreciated. I'm grateful for your service and your contribution to your community. So no retirement yet, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All right, there's a motion and a second. Commissioner Al?
Just a quick comment. Again, I think the comments have been great. I also know all five, and I think they're all excellent in their, in their role. Just as a side comment, I'm wondering whether or not we could handle, not today, I think what we're doing right now is very easy, and it's no problem to go forward. I just was wondering if we could have a resolution in the future that would simply identify our county appointments as this governing board in the future, so whoever we appoint to MAPC would just simply have another duty. Another way of handling this would be, just simply give them the extra duty by resolution, that whoever is appointed to MAPC by the five county commissioners would serve in this role for the county. Just a thought.
We can certainly look at that, Commissioner Howe. I think one of the issues we, stumbling blocks might be that the appointments to MAPC are governed by a joint, I think, city ordinance, county resolution. So you have to go through that whole process of getting the city council to approve, which I don't think they'd have any objection, and getting, then running it back by the county commission. I want to also point out, if you're unaware, that the purpose of this board, and we haven't used it yet, is a few years ago, we got nuisance abatement authority through the Kansas Legislature. And fortunately, we haven't had to use it. It's been a nice tool. It's gotten people to clean up some of their properties, but this is the board that we need in place to enforce that if it ever comes to actually using our nuisance abatement authority, so.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying. So... Okay. Thanks for clarifying. So there's a motion in a second to approve the five nominees. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries, and a few of them are here to be sworn in.
Those that are here.
Come forward. As Joe Johnson makes his way down. Joe, is this, is this the only board you've ever served on?
That's the first one I ever served on that's new.
That's good.
All right, gentlemen, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Sedgwick County Nuisance Appeals Board, so help me God.
I do.
All right.
Congratulations. Bob, I think your wife wants to take a picture of us wearing in behind you. Okay, you can recreate it. Okay.
I appreciate being appointed to a board that's new. It gave us a lot of latitude, and I was glad to hear Mike Papun talk about what it really does. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
I'd like to concur with, with Joe just got done saying. You know, thank you for this opportunity, especially to serve on a, on a new established board. You know, thank you for having faith in us, and we will do the best job that we possibly can. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Bob. Maybe see you tonight at the Wind Surge game, if you're still there. Go ahead.
What was the name on that?
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item O, resolutions appointing Commissioner Sarah Lopez and reappointing Commissioner Jim Howell to the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council.
Mr. Papun?
Chairman Mike Papun again. As you're aware, each year, the chairman makes certain appointments to various boards around the county, and in this particular case, Chairman Pete Meitzner is recommending that Commissioner Sarah Lopez, Commissioner Jim Howell be appointed to CJCC, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. Resolutions from proper form, as you approve the resolutions.
Thank you, and Commissioners, I, I, there are a few other appointments that need to happen that I need to coordinate with you all, but this one kind of came to the forefront, and I want to thank Commissioner Beatty, our discussion about having Commissioner Lopez serve in this board, and, and obviously, the reappointment of Commissioner Howell is, is much appreciated and accepted. So with that, I'll make a motion to the, appointing Commissioner Lopez and reappointing Commissioner Howe to this board.
Second.
The motion in a second. Being any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Next item, please.
New business, item P, consideration of a grant in the amount of $1,513,475 from KDOT for Economic Development Program for infrastructure to support new Charlotte Pipe and Foundry Manufacturer Facility.
Okay. Good morning. Valerie, welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioners, for the record, Valerie Tovar, your Economic Development Analyst with Finance. Before getting started today, I'd like to acknowledge in the audience, we have Brad Muller with Charlotte Pipe and Foundry, as well as their legal representation, Harvey Sorensen. We have Luke Lomair with WATCO, and we have Andrew Nave and Emily Younger with the Greater Wichita Partnership here. So they're here to assist with any questions you may have today. Commissioners, as we've heard many times before, regional collaboration is imperative to the continued growth and development to our area. Today's presentation represents just that, a partnership with the city of Mays, WATCO, and the state of Kansas. We are glad to hear of the announcement last week that Charlotte Pipe and Foundry, a fifth-generation, family-owned, East Coast manufacturing company, producer of cast iron and plastic pipe and fittings, are investing over $63 million into a new 134,000-square-foot pipe manufacturing facility here in Sedgwick County, the city of Mays, Kansas. This facility will be located in the Mays Industrial District Park, 153rd Street North and 119th Street. They will produce finished PVC pipe for both the residential housing and irrigation industry. Their new site is projected to be operational in 2025, and will bring 50 net new permanent full-time jobs over the next three years, with an average salary ranging of $55,000 annually. To provide our support for this project, and contingent upon the grant award, includes application for the Kansas Department of Transportation Economic Development Program Grant, which requires a 25% local match. Charlotte Pipe's main raw ingredient, PVC resin, can only be transported via rail car, and this location is currently without a rail spur. Charlotte Pipe also relies on the use of trucks for outbound product, and a right-turn lane is needed to mitigate traffic congestion on 119th Street. Here, Commissioners, you can see a visual breakdown of costs to support the infrastructure for this project. We have the rail total, rail spur total cost at $1,847,966, with the local match of 25%, equating to $461,992. Sedgwick County's portion of that would be $211,992, and WATCO would contribute the remaining $250,000. We also have the right-turn lane on 119th Street, total cost of $170,000, the local match of 25%, equating to $42,500. Sedgwick County's portion of that will be $21,250, and the city of Mays will be contributing the remaining $21,250. As you can see here, the county's total investment for the infrastructure project is $233,242. Here, Commissioners, what you can also see, we have an overview of the fiscal analysis completed by CEDBR, the Center for Economic Development and Business Research. You'll see in the second column, we have the total incentive amount, which includes taxes abated from new construction, as well as the infrastructure costs mentioned in my previous slide. We have the benefit-to-cost ratio and the return on investment over a 10-year period, as well as a 20-year period. So if you look at Sedgwick County, all in, we have an incentive amount of $1,775,167 over a 10-year period, a benefit-to-cost ratio of 1.3121, and a return on investment of 31.2%. Over a 20-year period, we're looking at a 2.2521 benefit-to-cost ratio and a return on investment of 124.7%. I will note, on the bottom row, we also have the Fire District, and we have that total incentive of $940,380. 10-year period benefit-to-cost ratio of 1.0521, with a 4.8% return on investment. And over a 20-year period, a 1.8121 benefit-to-cost ratio, with an 80.8% return on investment. So at this time, I can entertain any questions you have. If not, I'd like to invite up Brad Muller with Charlotte Pipe and Foundry to give you guys a brief overview of who they are.
Brad, welcome to the commission meeting. Thank you for your investments.
Chairman, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of Charlotte Pipe and Foundry, we are thrilled to be part of Sedgwick County, and thank you for the very generous package of incentives and infrastructure that's going to make this plant possible. I'll give you a brief, very brief overview of our company. We're a 122-year-old, family-owned business. Two fifth-generation members of the Dowd family, who founded the company in 1901, are in the business today. One of whom, Jenner Wood, led the selection of the site in Mays. Has been to Wichita a couple of times, been to Mays, and worked with a lot of the officials that we've recognized today. So I want to acknowledge Jenner Wood's role in that, and as a family member, taking the lead on picking this site was a big project, and we thank him for his work. We've been around making cast iron and plastic pipe and fittings for plumbing since 1901. We have 1,700 associates. We'll be bringing 50 new jobs to Mays. We also operate three other foundries in addition to our foundry in Charlotte, North Carolina, through an acquisition of Nina Enterprises in Wisconsin. So with their associates, we're up to 2,700 folks. We are American-owned, American-made. We do not manufacture overseas. We're very proud of that. We do have a set of values that we really come from the family that, that owns the company. We do treat all our associates with, with dignity and respect. We have not had a layoff in our plastics division since 1982, and in our cast iron division since 1957. We take care of our people, and we appreciate the talents that they bring and the hard work in our plants. The other value I'll point out to you is that we do devote our time, talents, and resources to the communities in which we live and work, and that, Mays will be no different in that regard. We're a very patriotic company. It was nice to see Hayesville get the Purple Heart recognition. We, we make it a point to hire military veterans. The other fifth-generation member of the Dowd family that I mentioned, Roddy Dowd III, was a second lieutenant in Marine Corps, so, and many of the Dowd family members are in that advertisement there. So we have a long, proud history of supporting the military. Just a brief overview of our products, cast iron, and, and plastic pipe and fittings for plumbing. We're also in the hot and cold water distribution. This plastic pipe, made from CPVC, is a replacement for copper pipe. And then we do make some specialty chemical waste products. Irrigation was also mentioned by Valerie. That's a new business for us that we made an acquisition in several years ago. So the plant in Mays will make both plumbing and irrigation pipe. This is our plant footprint. We do not have Mays on the plant footprint yet, but you can see that we needed that manufacturing here to serve the upper Midwest of the United States. Our plant in Cameron, Texas, has been expanded three times and is fully utilized, so the, the new plant in Mays will, will allow us to better serve our customers in the upper Midwest. And we do sell internationally. We export. We're the leading manufacturer of pipe and fittings. So our commitment to Sedgwick County is we will take care of our associates like family. We'll provide great benefits, job security. We have an excellent safety record, environmental record, and generous support for the communities in which we live and work. And we, again, thank you for your support and for all those in this room that made it, made this project possible.
Very good. I'll just comment that, thank you for choosing, and as you found out, generations, 100 years of business, that's kind of, in our, people before us, they know how to make things, they know how to ship things, they know how to export items, and it's just in our DNA in this community, that, that supply chain, all the things that make life good and, and product. And so, welcome aboard to be, add to that, to that as well.
Thank you.
So thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And I want to welcome you officially to Sedgwick County and to the new Mays Industrial District. It is the right fit for our community. Mays is the fastest-growing city in the entire state of Kansas. The location you chose is going to provide transportation, which I already mentioned about economic development, the importance of transportation in order to make that happen. But we also have some folks locally that we need to thank to, to help make this happen. First of all, the city of Mays is fantastic. We've been working with them, step by step, every step of the way. The Greater Wichita Partnership, which is, helps us bring projects like this to this region, does a great job. We appreciate that. Harvey Sorensen is here in the room. We've been working with him. He brought, first brought the project to us, I don't know how many months ago. It was quite a while ago, actually, when we started discussing this, and it was all secret. We couldn't tell anybody about what this project was, so. It, it, it's exciting where we're at today. Mays is also the right place, because we already have a rail line in that area. We just need to add a spur. We can add the, the left-turn lane that you need. In addition, your product from, and I'm not an expert on, but it, it requires electricity that is very, very, very reliable, because as your, the way I understand it, is your product is, is produced. Any glitch in that electricity stops what we're doing, and you have to throw away the product or try and recycle it. So it, we have the Gordon Evans Plant just across the mile away. So we've got the electricity that you need. We've got the workforce here that you need. We'll have the transportation in place that you need. We're growing, and I am very pleased to welcome you to the biggest and best district, although right across the road is the second one here, and he'll, he'll speak there in a moment, but. But I want to welcome you to my district.
Thank you. The city of Mays checked all the boxes for us, power, human capital, the infrastructure, so we appreciate all the efforts.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy when the time comes to make a motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner Dennis, and thank you, Brad, for, for coming to Mays. We, our, our job is to really promote an environment that attracts and retains our future workforce. And Greater Wichita Partnership, Andrew and Emily are here today. They're the cutting edge of this, and they're bringing projects, and they're, they're doing really global research into what it means to make this region competitive now and in the future. So it's one of the best investments we make here, is in, in GWP.
Yeah.
And, and what they did to help be the conduit to bring you to this community, it's significant. And I think that people need to understand the way that works and how, how this project started to come together. I also think it's important that we understand the lane in which Sedgwick County works in, and, and our job really is to support the interest of the region, but also the interest of the 20 cities in Sedgwick County. And I'll tell you, I, I, I mentioned it to you prior, I live a mile and a half away from where this site is going. I'd take my daughter to school every day and drive by and point to her what's coming, in a field right now. It's just a vacant field, but the development that's coming. We're proud of it. I know that for Mays, you're the perfect fit for Mays and what you're going to do there. They're excited. They're thrilled to have you there. I'm thrilled to have you there, and I just want to thank you for your investment into Sedgwick County.
Thank you. You talked about kind of secret code names. I have my file here. We call it Project Heartland. So we are glad to be in the heart, the heartland of America, so thank you.
That's good. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. It's truly an honor to have you here today. Thank you for choosing our community. It means, it means a great deal. We compete with regions all across this country that would love to have you, and the fact that we have you coming to here is a huge win. I want to say thank you to Andrew Nave and your entire group. I know this wasn't, this doesn't happen by accident. We have to sell what makes us special. And I, I, I believe we are special. We have a lot to offer, but it's hard to get that message out. So I do think this is a great decision for your company, but I do appreciate knowing that you're coming here. You have a choice to go anywhere in the world, and you're, you're investing here in our community. I think it's fantastic. I do have a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
If you're not prepared to answer these, don't worry about it. Just say, we'll get back later. I'm curious about the, the salary. These are jobs that says here, on the average salary of $55,000. Do you know what type of, for those jobs, what type of education requirements would be required for those jobs?
I think a high school education. The, the manufacturing process are pipe extrusion machines, and they are not highly technical, but they are machinery. So it will require a little bit of technical training to operate those machines.
Is, is it the intent that typically, typically you would hire somebody, then provide that training once they're hired on?
Yes, sir.
That's fantastic. And I just wanted to, to highlight two other points. Looks to me like you'll be basically going online around about two years from today. It's, it's about the timeline to get this constructed. Is that about right?
Yeah, my understanding is we hope to break ground in January, and it'll take roughly a year to, to put the structure up and get the machinery in place.
And then, and then finally, just as a, this may be a financial question, but we do put money back for economic development opportunities each year in our budget. And I believe we have, I'm looking at Brent, but I, I think we do have money essentially set aside in our budget for things exactly like this. So this is not really impacting our budget, because we have already earmarked money for projects such as this. Can you please speak to that? Oh, there you go, Valerie again.
That is correct. We do have money for this project.
Good.
Set aside.
So all my questions again. Thank you so much, and thank you, Chairman, for the chance to speak.
And again, another thank you to the Greater Wichita Partnership. If Andrew Nave would like to come up and say a few words? If Andrew Nave would like to come up and say a few words?
Andrew, you've been, you and GWP's been referenced about 10 times.
Yeah, well, a few more would be nice. That would be great, Commissioner. No, seriously, thank you. It's an honor to work, obviously, alongside your team and your staff and so many of our other partners. Evergy and Watco were hugely impactful in this, as was the state of Kansas. So again, I know it was framed earlier by Valerie, this was a team effort and so we very much appreciate it. And to Brad and the Charlotte leadership, we could not be more excited about your investment here in Sedgwick County. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew. Well said. Okay, with that, no other comments. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the consideration of a grant in the amount of $1,513,475 from KDOT for Economic Development Program for the infrastructure to support the new Charlotte Pipe and Manufacturing Foundry facility. Thank you.
My second.
Okay, it's a motion and a second. No other comments. We've had some good comments. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody, for all the hard work.
So much.
You bet. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item Q, 2023 Legislative Session.
Good morning, Tanya. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. As you are all aware, this has been a very engaged and challenging legislative session. And we have been in constant communication with our lobbyist group, Watkins Public Strategies, which is made up of Jason Watkins and Jessica Lucas. They do an excellent job of communicating, testifying, and urging on behalf of Sedgwick County and our legislative platform in issues. They are both here this morning and they are here to give us an update on this session and also let us know what has been accomplished on behalf of Sedgwick County and some of the work that we will have to do, I think, next year to prepare for next year's legislative session. And so I'm very happy this morning to hand over the podium to Jessica Lucas to give this update.
Good morning, Jessica. Welcome.
Good morning. Jessica Lucas with Watkins Public Strategies. Good to see all of you. I do want to recognize Jason Watkins, who's here with us, and also Nathaniel Blank, who's in the audience as well and helps support our work and the efforts we're making on behalf of Sedgwick County. Tom and Tanya have been fantastic to work with, as have all of you. This has been a really good legislative session. I'm eager to dive into what the accomplishments were. But first, just want to thank you for what you do for us and the participation that you have with us as we're all moving forward together in this process. You're never hesitant to come to Topeka if we need you, to hop on for a meeting or participate in a hearing, even if it's from here. So much appreciated. And with that, I want to go ahead and dive into what we perceive as being some of the big wins for us this year. Commissioner Howell, near and dear to your heart, was House Bill 2021, which the governor did sign on May 12. This was the bill that addresses some of the areas for improvement that were created by House Bill 367. It is a watered-down version of the original bill, but we consider it a major step toward balancing the juvenile justice and reform measures that were needed to kind of correct a little bit where things were not quite what they should have been in that original legislation of 367. This issue was not over. We are expecting there will be an interim committee this fall. So we'll continue to look at how to make improvements on some of those items that were not addressed this year, but really excited to see this get across the finish line. Think it will help us be able to serve juveniles in crisis better. And we'll look to keep you apprised of opportunities to keep working on this and make improvements. One of the bills that was absolutely a Sedgwick County bill, signed by the governor back in April, as you know, was House Bill 2082. This is what was called the Code Inspection and Enforcement Fund Legislation. That moved through as we expected. You'll recall in 2022 that there was nothing to, we made it through the House, but there was nothing to conference on, so that bill couldn't advance any further. So we did get that done this year and we're pleased to know that that tool is now in your toolbox. Senate Bill 131 is a bill that bundled several items, but what is of note to Sedgwick County is the language that would permit licensing changes to enable comm care to offer a community-based license for professional counselors, social workers, marriage and family therapists, and psychologists. So those operating under this license would be, would have to be supervised, but for no more than 24 months while they continue their training to receive their license to practice independently. And the hope with this is that this kind of temporary license to a person in training will help alleviate some of the staffing challenges that we face in the behavioral health field. So it's a workforce measure that we hope will give comm care some additional staffing options. There was also Senate Bill 228. What this bill does, among other things, is require the KDOT secretary to reimburse the county for cost at $100 a day whenever a person is in the custody of the county jail awaiting examination, evaluation, or treatment pursuant to the Kansas Code of Criminal Code of Procedures. So there's some pieces in there, but ultimately, as we're waiting for folks that need oswatamy and larnid help, that you'll at least be able to receive some reimbursement for that. Additionally, that language in the bill did some other things that, this is really more for smaller communities, but no longer requires that a county have a jail, but more, just that they provide jail services. That's not going to impact us. And it also states that the sheriff or keeper of the jail is not required to receive or detain a prisoner who is in the custody of an arresting agency until that person has been examined by a medical care facility or healthcare provider if they're presenting certain symptoms of mysterious illness, any type of unconsciousness. So that was the updates then on the bills. I want to dive now into what was included in budget. So for some financial investments that were made that are to the benefit of Sedgwick County and the region. We're excited about the $5 million in reimbursement, which is a fund, again, similar to that county bill, Jell, but this is a fund for healthcare providers, law enforcement agencies, and counties on an hourly basis for patient observation and transportation that follows an evaluation and approval for stay at a state mental health hospital and admission to a state hospital. So for instance, when Sheriff Easter has his patients that are there and waiting for care or possibly at St. Francis Hospital and they're having to stay with them until they can get them to a bed, we're going to be reimbursed for that from this fund of $5 million. That's a calculation. The Hospital Association worked on those calculations and feel that this amount is adequate. We'll see how that works out, but at least for now, there is a fund of resources to pull from. Additionally, and on your agenda was a hope for $2 million in additional dollars for senior nutrition services. Really want to give credit to the legislature and to the advocacy organization on this. They were successful in receiving 1.5 million in the mega budget and then they received an additional 1.5 million in the omnibus budget. So there was an addition of $3 million for senior nutrition services, the first budget increase in many, many years. So very excited that that money is in there. And of course, you know what they do with that. They do what seems like impossible things on a small budget. The budget fully funded 988 services. And then also from our agenda was the biomedical center and investments there. We saw 142 million included in the budget in early April. And then in the omnibus bill, WSU received an additional 6.5 million. KU also received an additional 6.5 million. So that project is well on its way. And then lastly, I want to note the addition of 3 million for a pilot mental health program in schools that comm care participates in. So that was at 10.5 million and now is being funded to the total of 13.5 million. From there, let's talk about what was vetoed. And there were some things that were vetoed that are of, we think something you're very happy was vetoed and other things, of course, that were a disappointment. But I want to start with Senate Bill 8 because it had a little bit of both. This bill was full of all kinds of tax policy and what concerned us the most for Sedgwick County was the inclusion of Senate Bill 282, which was language that would provide a property tax exemption for certain businesses, childcare, health clubs, and restaurants that are located near facilities where a government entity could be deemed as a competitor. However, also in that bill that will have an impact on Sedgwick County was the language that was providing an extension of your reimbursement for cost related to the printing and postage of your revenue-neutral mailings and hearings. So the state will not cover those costs because of this veto, but you also will not be dealing with any implications of Senate Bill 282. So that was Senate Bill 8. Also vetoed was the Senate Bill 169, which commonly called the flat tax legislation, and that's perceived to be the reason why the bill was vetoed. Included in that was the elimination of food sales tax beginning January 1, 2024. This did not impact local sales tax collection, so you wouldn't have felt any impacts from that. That bill also ended the tax cliff on social security, cut corporate income taxes to 3% amongst several other things. And as we all know and have heard about by now, that was vetoed. Another bundled bill was House Bill 2285. And the piece in that that would have impacted Sedgwick County is that that bill would have restricted the duties and authorities of the Secretary of Health and local health officials regarding infectious and contagious diseases. And then the last piece that was vetoed that I wanted to share with you was House Bill 2344. And this removed some of the regulatory barriers that are preventing more availability of childcare slots at daycare centers. This issue was also not concluded. I expect it to be vigorously discussed between now and the end of next year and hopefully coming back with a bill that everyone can agree to. There's universal agreement that childcare access is a problem. There's just a lot of different ideas for what that looks like. And I do hope that we'll see something through to fruition next year that can help us make a difference in the needs that our community has for childcare access. And then lastly, before we dig into any questions you have, I just want to raise your awareness of a couple of things that are of remaining concern for us that haven't been addressed through these policies. One is the funding of the mental health hospital of 25 million. I understand that announcement is imminent, possibly even this week. I'm afraid to say because we've been disappointed before when we've given updates, but do feel confident that we will hopefully be able to secure that 25 million and we continue to move down the road on that. The other piece that I think is important for us to note was the Resolution 1611, which the Senate did take up, as you know, passed with 28 votes. The House did not. And for those of you listening, this resolution would put to a vote a constitutional amendment to limit for property tax purposes, the valuation growth of any real property to 4% per year. So we expect that that's going to be taken up and I know we'll be in dialogue about that in the coming months in regard to what that means and how you wish to handle that. So with that are kind of what we consider the high points and certainly things to note and celebrate. One last thing, fentanyl test strips were also legalized. And just for your awareness as well, the smoking age was increased to 21, which put the state consistent with the feds. But happy to answer any questions that you have or provide any feedback. And if Jason or Nathaniel have anything, they're here as well.
Okay, Jessica, thank you. And Jason, I know during the course of the session, we had sometimes daily conversations, but scheduled weekly updates and fast-moving stuff. And your input and the cooperation of carrying the water on behalf of Sedgwick County is very, very valuable.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity to work for all of you and enjoy advocating on your behalf.
Well, thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
I don't really have any questions. I just want to say thank you to Jason and Jessica for all your support during the legislative session. You told us when we needed to be in Topeka. When we weren't in Topeka, you took care of the business for us. We had some nice wins. There are some things that we're going to have to continue to work on in the future, but we appreciate everything that you do. I'm glad that you, my only question was going to be, when are we going to get the Spark money? And they've been promising us that forever. I guess there's a second part of that because we also need the 15 million out of KDOT's budget for the two years probably. And will that come down at the same time?
So that is being handled through the agency itself. And I understand that the process is in place for those dollars to be released. And I would have to defer to Tanya or Tom for more specifics on that, but it is separate, but happening directly with the agency.
Okay. Well, that money is really critical because we don't have timeline on spending it, the Spark money. The longer they delay on getting it to us, the harder it is for us to spend. So it's important. And that announcement this week will also include the Spark money for the biomed facility?
I cannot speak for what the administration is going to do, but I do know that they're aware that the timelines are approaching and there has been consideration for all of those projects. And we're hopeful that that announcement will be made this week to include all things.
Okay. Again, thank you all very much. I appreciate your support during the legislative session and everything getting ready for it. And now we're going to have to start regrouping for next year. Thank you.
Okay. And comment from your other assistant, Commissioner Howell?
I made a reference to Con Air last meeting, so I'll make another comment about another movie. You ever seen the movie Oblivion?
I have not, Commissioner.
There was a phrase in there about, are you an effective team? I don't know if you've heard that before or not, but Jessica and Jason, you are an effective team. You're very well-respected in the legislature. You have connections that are, it's taken years to build those relationships and you are very effective. And so I'm thrilled to have you guys working for Sedgwick County on our legislative platform. I would say this has been a, I've watched a lot of legislative sessions. This one was different for, I don't know why it was different, but it was different. It made my head spin. I could hardly keep track of what was going on. And there's more tax provisions this year than I think I've ever seen before. I have some theory as to why that happened, but I am curious about a couple of bills here. One of those, I even heard it on the radio this morning, there's some debate whether or not the governor will sign the education budget bill. And I guess that's separate from their other budget bill. Can you please explain what's going on there and why, why is this controversial?
Yeah, I'm happy to talk about that and appreciate the question. First of all, thank you too for the compliments. That's high praise from you. We appreciate that very much. But happy to talk about that because I think that for the public, this is probably of interest as well. So typically you have a budget bill. And historically, the education budget has always been included in the budget bill. So when we're talking about things that have been approved funding-wise, school funding would have been included in that too. A few years ago, the legislature made the decision to separate that. And so they've had a separate school funding bill. The question that is being bantered about there is currently, the only thing, I believe the only thing that the governor has left to make a decision on from this session is the school funding bill. Couple of things to that that are different. Generally, the legislature, I would be telling you today, we have a date set that we knew we would be returning for something called Signe Die. That date does not exist. The reason that normally is set is so that the legislature can go back and reconsider vetoes. So that's off the table. So for this existing school funding bill, if the governor were to veto it, then the legislature would have to come back for a special session because they effectively would have nothing decided in regard to how schools are being funded. The governor has the option of vetoing it. She has the option to let it become law without her signature. The deadline for that, I believe, is Thursday. A second option that the governor has, of course, is to sign it and let it become law. And then I think the piece that you're alluding to that is somewhat controversial is can she potentially line item veto items in this school funding bill the same way that she can with a regular budget bill? Of course, that's never been done. We haven't necessarily operated in a system where we've had that separate, but only for a few years. And I don't know the answer to, it won't be me making a decision about the legality of any line item vetoes if that's the path that the governor chooses to take. But the legislature does not have the ability to go back and override a veto because they went ahead and adjourned Signe Die. So a special session would be required. So for those following at home, that is the big issue that's still hanging out there, that everyone is curious to know what's going to happen with school funding and believe we should have an answer by the end of the day, Thursday.
Very good. Is this for K-12 only or does this include regions as well?
Correct. So the budget bill, the school, the school budget bill is only K-12. So regions have received their funding. WSU was not impacted by this decision in any way. All of their funding was included in the omnibus bill that's already been passed and funding was included in the omnibus bill that's already been passed and signed.
And then I also don't understand something about the, I don't know if it was HB 2344, I think that's what she said, but the childcare legislation that was vetoed, and I guess it was sustained, or I don't know if they tried to override it or not, but it's...
They did try and override it. They came very close, but not successful.
Can you explain what is behind the controversy there? I don't understand what's happening that's causing that to be so controversial.
Well, there are questions about putting regulations into statute. I think generally, though, you've got some folks who believe that the solution to addressing the childcare system depends heavily on just there being more resources going into childcare. And you have folks who believe that addressing it through regulations, which means allowing providers to take care of more children at different ages if they want. Kansas has very, some of the most strict regulations in terms of the number of children that you can take care of. In fact, I think there's only one or two other states that have the same requirement for ratio for infant care that we do. So others' providers are able to take care of more people in other states. Of course, this legislation does not require anyone to take care of more children, but it would allow if someone wanted to. We heard testimony from a childcare provider in Hays who has a daycare center, that would this legislation pass, he would be able to take care of 20 more children, which is a really big deal. So it certainly was a disappointment. We're hoping we can, that there will be common ground found among all of the interested parties about what solutions are. I think that legislators are definitely wanting to pass something next year. So while there was not success this year, I look for something to come through next year, even if it ends up being an override.
I apologize for my next one. I got a little confused as you were speaking. But I think it was Senate Bill 6 that was the original bill that prohibited the state from making health mandates or whatever it was. Did that, where did that end up again? What was the final bill number? And were we out with that bill again? I apologize for asking.
So what did get into legislation that ended up on the governor's desk would have restricted the powers of the Secretary of Health as well as local health officials to make any kind of, to take certain actions in regard to contagious and infectious diseases. The governor vetoed that. So nothing has changed in terms of what your public health officials can do managing infectious disease control.
Very good. And then for us as a commission, one of the things I think we need to work on this summer is I would like to see us bring our local delegation in. And let's talk about SCR 1611. I am, as a fiscal conservative, I understand why this bill is happening. I get their intended... I know why this is intended to solve a problem, but I think they're misguided. I don't think it solves a problem. I think it actually creates a problem. But I would be very glad to work with you guys through the summer. I don't think this is something we can wait until next January to take up. This is almost an emergency. If this was to pass, I don't think you can ever unpop this balloon. This is a one-time issue. Once we go down this path, you can never undo it. And I think that the damage that this will cause to create unfair taxation is extreme. And I think one thing I'll say, I even wrote a rap about this last week, fair taxes should be fair. And I think this is inherently unfair. If we don't like the growth, I understand that, but we need to work with our elected officials to trim up our budgets. That's where we, that's the real opportunity. And the legislature, I think, needs to recognize that truth. It's not about the economy and the price of housing going up. It's about the fact that our budgets are maybe growing in a way that the people don't like. And so I'll just say this as a point of reference. You can correct me if I'm wrong. I say about maybe 10 or 12 people have come before this commission in the last two or three years that have asked us to make adjustments to our budget. And I think every one of them was an ask for increasing spending. No one asked us to decrease anything. So in terms of, you know, trying to advocate for leaner budgets, we have not had the public response during the budget adoption. We have had a huge response. My phone burns off the hook when those evaluation notices come out because people connect that increase to an intent to bias to increase taxes. I don't think that, that really is, I think, a misunderstanding exactly how taxes work. So I am very anxious about SCR 1611. And I would do everything I can to help educate anyone who is interested in taxes being fair. I think we need to, again, the motivation is great, but I think their solution is misguided. I would like to be very, very involved in educating over the summer, trying to get people to understand, I think, the issue of fairness. Again, thank you for all you did. You guys did a great job this year.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay. I'd love to hear the comments.
All right.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Tanya, anything?
The only thing that I might add is just to answer Commissioner Dennis's question on the 15 million. That 15 million has been allocated to Kdad's, and we are working with them as we work through the process of getting them information on RFP for design. And so as we send them information on what those cost estimates might look like, they will then send us information back to us on grant agreements so that we can get started.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Do we need a motion, receive and file? Or I'll make that motion, receive and file?
Second.
Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And on this agenda here, we have a correction that we need to reopen Item P, as I understand it. Mike Capone, you want to?
Yeah, Mike Capone, County Counselor. It's my understanding, thanks to Commissioner Howe and Justin, I think they both heard it, that the actual motion repeated the consideration of the grant item, but really didn't address some of the recommended action items. And so, I mean, you can either read the recommended action or say, I move to take the recommended action. But apparently, we didn't do that in this case. So just to dot all the i's and croc'sities, let's go back to Item P and take the recommended action here.
I make a motion that we reopen Item P. Motion in a second to reopen Item P. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And with that, we will make the corrective action, and I'll go back to the motion in a second. So.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In my zeal to get this passed, I read statement above that rather than the correct statement. So I will move that we approve the submission of the grant application, establish appropriate budget authority, and authorize Chairman to sign.
A second.
Okay. Motion in a second on Item P. No other comments. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay. And we are now at Item R. But there's been a request, a couple requests to take a brief break, and then we'll be right back. So let's, it's 10:33. Let's target about a seven, eight minute break. We'll be back shortly after 10:40 a.m. Thank you.
Do you want to go ahead and get started? Standby for ten count. Okay. Here we go, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four.
Okay. Are we back live? We're back live right now? Okay, thank you, everybody. It's ten forty-one. We will return from recess. Commissioner Lopez will be zooming in. Make sure she's zoomed in. Commissioner Howell will be here in a minute. So. With that. Next item, please.
Item R, CON twenty-two dash zero 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 four nine. Conditional use request in the county for a hundred and ninety-foot wireless communications facility on property zoned RR Rural Residential District located in the southeast corner of East Seventy-first Street South and South Ninety-ninth Street East.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Madam Clerk. Before we begin this. Got some, a couple of comments here for the sake of individuals in attendance. Want to outline the procedure for this item, so we don't have any confusion. First, we will hear a presentation from the Planning Department. Then, we will provide the applicant or agent with the opportunity to speak. Then, we will provide those of you who have signed up for public comment with an opportunity to speak. In each, and the board may ask follow-up questions at any time. During the public comment, the clerk, sitting right here, will keep the time. It's a, if you have, if you've signed up, you will have three minutes to make your comments. The clerk will keep the time. She's sitting right here. She also has a thirty-second remaining sign that she will hold up to, so as you're speaking at the podium. And then, you'll have thirty seconds to wrap up, and then the timing will be off. The comments made will be from the podium only. We ask that you keep in mind, our board has previously heard comments on this item. We have had the opportunity to review submitted materials. We have had the opportunity to review minutes of both MAPC hearings. And after we have allowed the referenced individuals to speak, we will bring the matter back to the bench for further discussion and ultimately motions and votes. So before Mr. Wadele begins his presentation, we, I ask the commissioners disclose any ex parte communications they have had concerning this item. And I'll start with saying I've had a couple of emails related to this item that I've received, but I've had no direct conversations. Chris or Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have also received several emails on this subject. I can still make an open and informed decision.
Okay, Commissioner Howell?
I have received extensive ex parte communication. I have received emails, I've had some face-to-face conversations. And I am able to make a decision. I am doing, I've done my very best to stay absolutely neutral on this up through this point. But I would just tell you, there's been extensive information been given to me on the opposition side. So I have to recognize that that's just a truth. I'll do my very best to look at the data as it's presented to us again today. Thank you.
Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. I've received ex parte communication via emails, some documents. I'm happy to keep an open mind and hear the conversation today.
And Commissioner Lopez, who's joined us by Zoom?
Yes, I too have received emails and a couple of documents and keeping an open mind throughout this. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will begin. Welcome, Scott, to the meeting.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Scott Wadele from the Planning Department, here to present this item. For this case, the applicant is requesting a conditional use in order to allow the placement of a one-hundred-and-ninety-five-foot tower, monopole tower, on the subject site. The subject site is identified on this map graphic in the black box there with the arrow. This item is being presented because it was returned by the County Commission to the Planning Commission. In terms of the request, the applicant is requesting the conditional use, as I indicated, for the monopole tower. The conditional use is required because the site is outside the area authorized for an administrative approval of a wireless communication facility and because the current zoning of the site, rural residential, would limit the height of the tower to one-hundred-and-twenty feet. That's the reason why, those are the reasons why the conditional use is required. If approved, the applicant would need to comply with the solid screening requirement per the Unified Zoning Code. And please note that the state of Kansas prohibits consideration of eighteen factors when considering an application for a communication structure. Five of those factors are listed in the staff report. In terms of the property, the subject site is generally located on the south side of Seventy-first Street and about three-quarters of a mile west of Greenwich Road. The site is located within the City of Derby urban area of influence and the Derby area of subdivision authority. In terms of context, the character of the surrounding area includes large lots that are primarily for residential or agricultural use. Properties to the north, east, south, and west are zoned rural residential district and developed with large lot, single-family residential uses and put to use for agricultural purposes. One parcel located northwest, northwest of the subject site is owned MF eighteen multifamily residential district and is developed with multiple single-family dwellings on one lot. In terms of review, on January nineteenth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item. The MAPC recommended approval of the request, twelve to zero. Several members of the public spoke in opposition to the rezoning request or the conditional use with general concerns over the impact to property values, detrimental visual impacts to the surrounding area, possible health concerns, and the construction, concerns about construction of the tower in the floodplain. On January nineteenth, also, the City of Derby Planning Commission considered the application because the property is in the Derby urban area of influence. The City of Derby has indicated that their Planning Commission recommended denial of the request. This was based on the failure of a motion to approve. The golden factors discussed prior to the motion and in support of the denial included the following. The extent to which the removal of restrictions would detrimentally affect nearby property owners. One member expressed the tower would negatively affect nearby property values and make acquiring a loan more difficult. Another one was opposition or support of neighborhood residents. Several members of the public spoke at the Derby Planning Commission meeting in opposition. The general concerns were similar to those voiced at the, at the MAPC Planning Commission meeting. In addition to concerns over the possible impacts of fiveG wireless service on aircraft in the height of the tower and proximity to McConnell Air Force Base. Cedric County Citizen Advisory Board for District Five does not consider planning applications. Several protests were filed against this application, totaled just over forty-six percent of the protest area, which exceeds the twenty percent threshold established by the state of Kansas and therefore requires a supermajority in order to approve. On March first, the County Commission returned the case, considered the case, and returned it to the Planning Commission in order for the Planning Commission to clarify the reasonableness of state law application and the aesthetics. Multiple individuals spoke in opposition to the, of the application during this meeting. On April thirteenth, the MAPC, Wichita Cedric County Planning Commission, reconsidered the application and recommended approval thirteen to one. This was following staff presentation and a general discussion about state law and aesthetics. Multiple members of the public commented in opposition to the application. In terms of votes, a quick note on that. This case, in order to approve, will require a supermajority, so four out of five commissioners, in order to be approved because of the protest petition exceeding twenty percent. In terms of commissioned action, it is recommended that the commission adopt the findings of the MAPC, approve the requested conditional use, authorize the chairman to sign the resolution, and authorize the resolution to be published. Again, this requires four out of five votes. Alternatives include the following. You can make alternative findings and deny the application. This would require a simple majority of three out of five votes. You can approve the requested conditional use with different conditions or modifications. This also would require four out of five votes because it would be an approval. It would need, because of the protest petition that was submitted. So with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics and illustrations that we have. So here's the zoning map for the area. You can see that it's primarily surrounded by rural residential. This is the map from the comprehensive plan, showing that it's in the urban growth area for the city of Derby. This is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant as part of the application. Another graphic that was submitted by the applicant as part of the application. This is the protest map. It shows the areas in blue and the areas in red are where protests were submitted per state law. The protest within the green circle, which is the calculation or protest area, is what's calculated towards the twenty percent threshold. So those are shown in red. This is a closer zoomed-in look. This is a map of residences in the area with distances. And here are some photos from the area. This is looking directly at this application site. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions for Scott at this time? And I don't see any, so we will next provide the applicant or the agent a chance to address us.
Good morning. My name is Glenn Clocky. And I am with Network Real Estate of the St. Louis, Missouri. We represent AT&amp;T in these matters. Our address is five zero five five Highway N, St. Charles, Missouri. And thank you for your time and consideration again on this application. What we are asking for is approval on a hundred-and-ninety-five-foot monopole that will service AT&amp;T's coverage area. AT&amp;T has, has been working on this, or I have been working on this site for AT&amp;T for about four years. So this site is a, is a necessary site for AT&amp;T. They're, they feel like to improve the coverage in the city of Derby and Cedric County. This site is critical to them. It is, the overall design of this site is in conjunction with a, a tower that the City of Derby approved back in twenty twenty-one. That is about three and a half miles to the northeast. That is on air. And this site will be communication with the site should we get this approved. That particular location has a hundred-and-eighty-foot monopole, very similar to what we're asking for at this point. So this one will, will complete the coverage right now for AT&amp;T in the Derby and Cedric County area. So this, this particular location was, was designated by AT&amp;T, their engineers. They give us the search ring. We go out and find them a candidate that, that we can do a lease with. And this particular location was picked by the engineers. We did have a prior application that was about well over a thousand feet away from this, on the same property. That was denied. It was a taller tower. It was a two-hundred-and-thirty-five-foot tower. It was a lattice tower, meaning it, it, it was a three-legged tower. So back to this application, this particular location is going to be a hundred-and-ninety-five-foot monopole. It complies with all the county setbacks. We are, we have leased a seventy-foot-by-seventy-foot area that we will fence in fifty-foot-by-fifty-foot, which will be a solid type syn, syntex fence, based on what the county wants us to do. We can make it look like brick, rock, whatever, whatever you would prefer. The access off this will come off of Seventy-first Street. There will be a twelve-foot gravel road that will be, be built off to the tower site. There'll be a turnaround up where the lease area is. We do realize that this location is in the floodplain. We have taken that into consideration. It is very common for IT, for towers in general to be built in floodplains. We've built them, built them all over the United States, particularly in the Midwest and floodplains. What they do in those situations is the tower is not raised. The, the equipment only is raised out of the floodplain. So this particular location, right now, we feel like we're going to have to raise the equipment four feet to keep it on a floodplain. Should we get approved, we will have surveyors look at that. And they, we, they have looked at it, but we have to hire an environmental company. They have told us it's probably going to be four feet. The equipment that's going to go in this site is what they call cabinets. They're four-foot high. So if the county wants us to put a tall enough fence to visually block that equipment, AT&amp;T will do that. They're, you know, they can put up either a six- or an eight-foot fence. The other, the other thing that, that, that we have done as far as to address property values is we have done a higher valbridge appraisers. They've done a real estate study that actually shows comps, real comps in the area that shows that it does not devalue the price of homes. So I am going to have, introduce you to Andrew Baker. He's a, he's a licensed appraisal. I do want him to briefly go over the, the, the study that we sent in. But the other thing I do want to touch on is that FAA. We have submitted to the county and to the city that we have our FAA approvals. There are two. One is permanent. This tower will not be lit once the site is built. There's, there's a temporary FAA approval for a crane. So when you set a tower, you have to get the approval for a crane, which is going to be higher. It's above two-hundred feet. So everything above two-hundred feet has to be lit. So for about two or three days while that crane is there, setting that tower, should we get approved, that crane will be lit. Once that's down, there will be no lights on this tower. It takes about six to eight weeks from beginning of construction to finalizing the site to be completely constructed. So after that, just, you'll have like four-wheel-drive vehicles going in there, hooking up the equipment, things like that. But there is no traffic to these sites. They maintain themselves. You'll probably see a tech come in maybe every once a month. If the site's performing, you, you won't see him maybe every six months. So pretty much that's, that's in a nutshell, and I am open for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Is it Glockey?
Clocky.
Clocky?
Yes.
All right, thanks for the comments. Any questions? I don't see any at this time.
Thank you. Can I have Andrew come up very briefly?
Good morning. Just want to talk very briefly. I did talk to you guys about this back in March. And Commissioner Lopez asked a really good question that I did not know the answer to at the time, which was how far were my sale comparables from cell towers? So I just want to briefly go over that information. So anyways, sale one was located in Derby at two oh five West Village. And that is a, the, the home was about a hundred feet from a large water tower that was a hundred-and-twenty-five feet tall, and that's, that sale was in line with other sales. Sale two was also located in a rural section of Derby. That sale sold ten thousand dollars over the asking price. And it was located three-hundred-and-fifty feet away from a guy tower, which is a much taller tower that was two-hundred-and-fifty feet in height. And the listing broker indicated there was no impact on price. Sale three was located in South Wichita at ten fifteen Firefly Circle. And that's sold for two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, which is slightly below the list price. And that was located a hundred feet away from a cell tower that was a hundred-and-twenty-five feet in height. Sale four was located at one-one-one-four Peach Street in Udora, Kansas. And that property sold ten thousand dollars above the list price. It was located about a hundred feet away from two large cell towers that are a hundred-and-fifty feet in height. And there was also a, a water tower located in that area, too. And the listing broker reported no comments from anybody after an open house. And then finally, the last sale we analyzed was located at one-eight-three-eight-zero Mead Street in Gardner, Kansas. And that sale sold for two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, which was in line with the listing price after one day on market. It was located two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet from a lattice tower that was a hundred-and-twenty-five feet in height. So just wanted to provide, provide that information for you guys.
Okay, thank you for that information. And Commissioner Lopez, that was your question? Do you have any comments, questions?
I don't. I just appreciate you getting that to us. It's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions, further questions? Not at this time, okay? We will now go to the, to the public comments, which we will read off the names of the people that, there's eleven people, I think. Ten people that have signed up. So I will call them by, by order of sign up. And I will call the next person behind that person, so that, that person would have an opportunity to be over here on the stairs to keep this moving. Okay, so first up is Jack Heslop from Derby. And following him will be Mike Gudrich? Okay, Goodman, I'm sorry. Right. And a reminder that we have three minutes. Thanks, Jack.
Thanks for all the positive things you guys are doing. It's fun to sit through one of these and hear what's going on. And thanks for fixing the bridge, by the way. That's been a pain for a while. Okay, my name is Jack Heslop. I'm a member of the Derby City Council, and I've had the pleasure to know most of you for several years. The issue is that I'm not speaking for the council. I'm speaking for myself. Derby, as you know, is growing rapidly. Recently, we've had over three-hundred acres of land that's gone through the Planning Commission in the last, I don't know, probably year, year and a half, and to be developed. And as you know, because of our growth, we're the second first-class city in the county. So that's pretty important. We kind of like to run our own show. I'm not knocking you. I'm just telling you. I know that cell towers are important. We all rely on them, and we like to go in our house and have them work and all that. And I appreciate AT&amp;T wanting to, to do that. But they didn't have to put this tower here. There's many other sites, particularly, I just allude to one. High Park, which is a large park in the city, fairly close to where this tower is proposed. And it has a very high area where the ballpark is. And they could easily take one of those cell, those towers for the lights and extend it up. The people, I lived close to there, so I, I know that it would not bother anybody because they're used to having the lights on at night and things like that. Why they didn't choose a site like that, I don't know. I know it's available. But the bottom line is that of those three-hundred-and-fifty acres or three-hundred acres, all the area can see this tower. And it's going to be like a sore thumb, two-hundred feet or a hundred-and-ninety-five feet sticking up there. And it'll always be reminder. And by the way, that other tower that they just put in is in a commercial area, cleared down by K fifteen. It's in a very low area. It's hard to see, but I, you cannot believe how many people moaned and groaned about that since it's been put in. Something I'd like to mention. I, so my bottom line is, I'd like to say, let us choose what, what goes on in our area. Thanks a lot.
Okay, Jack, any questions? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Heslop, for being here today, and thank you for your service to the city of Derby. And you've been, you've been on the council for quite a lot while, so I wanted to say thank, thank you for the leadership there. I, I am curious, do you live near this tower, proposed site?
Right, oh, no, I, I don't live there next to this tower, close to it, right where I recently moved about, I don't know, a year ago. And so we're a little further away.
So I, I am curious.
I'll be able to see it, though.
I, I am curious. So the Derby Planning Commission had made a motion to approve, which failed. And that was presented this morning by our staff, that that's interpreted as a motion to deny. That's why I see, that's why they, they interpret that. And so I'm curious, did the Derby City Council consider making a, a statement of support or opposition to this? And why did they not do so?
I think mainly because it's kind of been kept quiet. I don't, it, I know most of the, other than what we've been asked by the people who live in the area, it's, has not been put out to the city council. I never saw anything.
I understand it hasn't been, it wasn't required, certainly. But the Planning Commission wasn't able to make a recommendation. If the city council has an opinion on this, I really wish they would have entered that officially. But again, so it's anecdotal today because...
I've talked to most of the city council on this, and I think the mayor was kind of neutral on it. But the, the rest of the city council was not for it. In fact, they, at the MAPC meeting, we had three, three council members there in opposition. So with Mr. Coleman and myself, that's five out of the eight.
Okay, thank you for your, thank you for speaking this morning.
Okay, and Jack, wait just a second. Commissioner Lopez has a question? Commissioner Lopez has a question?
I apologize, it's not for Jack, but it just, last time we had these conversations, a big hiccup that we were finding, at least for me on the commission, was what we are allowed to take into consideration and what we're not allowed to take into consideration on this. I don't know if it's possible just to go over that real quick. So as we're hearing these public comments, we can just make sure that legally we're where we need to be on how we vote on this.
Okay, thank you.
Kirk Sponsel, Assistant County Counselor. Yes, as indicated by Scott Waidell, there are specifically 18 items laid out by statute 662019-F that limit or deny your consideration of certain elements. What I was doing is I was keeping track as people were talking, and I was planning on bringing it forth later on when the, when the board brought it back to them as to what items they couldn't consider. With that said, based on your request, Commissioner Lopez, I'll indicate those items that have already been brought up that should not be considered by the board. And then I guess going forward, I'll just, I'll just raise them immediately after each individual talks if there are concerns about their comments. With that said, starting out with, the applicant raised comments about the location itself being meant to improve coverage to the area for AT&amp;T, that it would complete the coverage for Derby and surrounding Sedge Creek County area, actually pursuant to KSA 662019-F1. The board should not evaluate an applicant's business decisions with respect to the applicant's designed service, customer demand for service or quality of the applicant's service to or from a particular area or site. So my interpretation is those comments would fall within what you should not be considering. In addition, the comments just raised by this initial speaker, Derby council member, he made comments about how there are other sites available. One specifically referenced was Hyde Park that went bother areas. So this is consideration of other potential locations for a cell tower. And for the same KSA statute, section F3, you shall not evaluate an application based on the availability of other potential locations for the placement of wireless support structures or wireless facilities. And then it goes on from there to talk about co-location, but specifically it references you shouldn't be considering other potential locations in your analysis of the application before you. And with that, Commissioner Lopez, I don't know if that answers your question. I know that you, that you raised the issue more broadly, but what I can certainly do is I can certainly raise the issues more immediately as they're potentially presented by speakers.
No, I appreciate that. I just, you know, hearing everybody and then hearing this after, it just makes it a little bit harder for me to follow, which we can and can't do. So I just wanted the reminder before, but if you can, after people speak, that would be really helpful for me going forward. Thank you.
Okay, I will approach it that way. Thank you.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay, thanks, Kirk. All right, thanks, Jack, for your comments. Next up again is Mike, and followed by John Harper.
Thank you, guys. My name is Mike Gooden, 11501 East 75th Street South. Is it possible that I could, I don't have a slide, I have this, I'd like you to see, though, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
That's all right. This is a map of the tower. It's the, it's the one in the circle. And everything in red represents Derby, which voted against it, and all the landowners that are here present protest. That, I'm sorry. Would you like one, too? So I thought this up, if all these in red here are opposed to it, who's this tower We should have a voice in this. Derby already put it down, and at the last meeting, the AT&amp;T gentlemen said that the coverage was primarily for Derby. So if they turned it down, why stick it, stick us with it? If it's primarily for Derby, put it in Derby. My main objection to this is a possible health problem. I know that sounds like crazy, but I was doing some reading last night, not on weird websites, but it's a National Institute of Health or the CDC, I don't remember which one. We still lose 12,000 to 15,000 Americans a year from asbestos, and asbestos was perfectly safe back in the day. And this one really surprised me. We lose 400,000 people a year to lead exposure. What's interesting about that is it took decades of exposure to make a problem. It took a couple more decades of it toward to start killing people. So for 40 years, what was something that was deemed safe turned out not to be. I'm a farmer, and they take chemicals away from us all the time. They make mistakes. Well-meaning, I don't, I'm not putting any maliciousness with anybody, but we, some of this stuff, we don't know. By the time we find out, problems are real. And it may be perfectly safe, and I hope it is, but I, I don't, I don't know. And frankly, you guys don't either. So when you go to vote, would you want this in your backyard? It's, you're putting it in mine. So that's all I got. Do you have any questions? That's good, because I didn't have any answers.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Next up is John Harper, followed by Mike Harper.
Sorry, first Kirk Sponsel, Assistant County Counselor again. Just in going along with what was previously spoken, KSA 662019-F has two subsections that are potentially applicable to the comments just made by the most recent speaker. He's talking about harm considerations. So F13 indicates that you cannot impose any compliance measures for the radio frequency emissions or exposure from wireless facilities that exceed the requirements of the Federal Communications Commission rules for radio frequency. And in addition, subsection F14 indicates that in conformance with 47 U.S.C. 332 C7B4, you cannot reject an application in whole or in part based on perceived or alleged environmental effects of radio frequency emissions or exposure. As such, based on these subsections, I recommend you not consider harms raised related to radio frequency emissions.
Okay. Thanks. Any questions? I don't see any. Next speaker, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. Again, this is going to be the, this is going to be the debate of the day, I believe. Now, I went up and looked up on item 14 there, it uses the word environmental, environmental effects of radio frequency emissions or exposure, and the question is, what is that? So if you go look at the plain definition of what an environmental effects is, it's, it's a very common term. It does not include the subs, the sub idea of health. It's, it's a lot of other things. And so if, if the state legislature intended health, they should have said health, but they did not say health. In fact, the 47 U.S.C. reference there, if they intended health, they should have said health. And so I know there's going to be a connection on how we insert the word health into this definition, but it's not actually plain language. I use the word sloppy law. This is a sloppy law because it doesn't actually include the word health. And so if someone has health concerns, back to the golden rules, item number five under the golden factors, it says relative gain to the public health, safe, to the public health, safety and welfare as compared to the loss in value and the hardship imposed upon their applicant. This is a specific golden factor that actually mentions the issue of public health, but the prohibition for considerations today, it uses the phrase environmental effects, it doesn't actually use the phrase health anywhere. So I know that you're gonna, there's going to be a way to connect the idea of health to this, but in terms of plain language reading of the law, it doesn't actually say that. Thank you.
Just for clarification on the health issue and whether or not that's part of a consideration of environmental effects. So in looking at the reference to 47 U.S.C. 332 C7B4, it indicates, for the record, no state or local government or instrumentality thereof may regulate the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions to the extent that such facilities comply with the commission's regulations concerning such emissions. So in this situation, the commission referred to is the Federal Communications Commission, and they do actually have regulations on radio frequency emissions. That is going to be found in its 47 U.S.C. 1.1310, and its title is Radio Frequency Radiation Exposure Limits. So those are the standards established by the commission that is referenced in that first U.S. Code cited. Now, for this Federal Communications Commission regulations that I just read off, the, the basis of this section, they indicate the provisions of this subpart implement subchapter one of the National Environmental Policy Act of 1969 as amended. So essentially, the National Environmental Policy Act is applicable to numerous U.S. Departments and agencies, one of which is the Federal Communications Commission. So in essence, they're trying to apply regulations imposed by that act. In addition, they indicate a further explanation regarding implementation of the National Environmental Policy Act is provided by the regulations issued by the Council on Environmental Quality, 40 CFR 1500 to 1508 dot 28. Now, when you look at those regulations that are specifically cited by the Federal Communications Commission, they do provide some definitions. Within, within 40 CFR 1508 dot one, which was cited by the Federal Communications Commission, within 1508 dot one, they define the effects or impacts, which mean changes to the human environment from the proposed action or alternatives that are directly foreseeable and include the following. And then they go on and they list numerous definitions. Some deal with direct effects, some deal with indirect effects, some deal with cumulative effects, and they also indicate effects include ecological, such as the effects on natural resources and on component structures and functioning of affected ecosystems, aesthetic, historic, cultural, economic, social, or health, whether direct, indirect, or cumulative. So I certainly understand that you're charming the, the law here is sloppy. There's certainly multiple steps to be taken, but it is potentially be argued that the language was potentially made broad on purpose. But within the scope of the NEPA, they specifically include health as an environmental effect. That's how we get, that's how I get to the point of saying you should not consider health impacts of these radio frequency emissions.
Thank you, Kirk. Next speaker is, I believe, John Harper, right? John, followed by Mike Harper.
Hello, my name's John Harper, 9451 South Woodland Boulevard in Derby. A short little comment here. The Derby Planning Commission denied this application. The proposed site is not a rural area. There are 14 houses within a 1,500-foot radius of the tower site. The character of the area is large, is large suburban lots. It's adjacent to a developed area of Derby, with more nearby homes being built in the next couple of years. The proposed site is not a heavy commercial or industrial area. It doesn't meet the guidelines of the Wireless Communications Master Plan guidelines, which is to keep all towers out of residential areas. This is the size of a 20-story building, yet the tallest structure in this area, a two-story, is a two-story buildings. There are no other structures similar in height nearby. Introducing an unusually large, tall, commercial, industrial object into an area with no other such objects creates a very noticeable, out-of-place contrast. This conditional zoning use request is not suitable or compatible for a residential neighborhood. With that, I recommend you deny it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? I don't see any. Okay, next speaker is Mike Harper, followed by Janine Harper.
Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Mike Harper, live at 7010 South 99th Street East, Derby, Kansas. The board has the power to regulate installation of cell towers based on aesthetic considerations. Federal case law supports that power, as can be seen from the memorandum in opposition and the 23 letters from nearby residents. By size alone, a tower like this does not belong in a residential neighborhood. It would be completely inconsistent with the character of the area. It does not comply with the Unified Zoning Code or the Comprehensive Plan. The Golden Rule requires denial of AT&amp;T's application. The factors to be considered in zoning proceedings are outlined in Golden Verge, City of Overland Park, Kansas. The most important considerations include, one, zoning uses and character of the neighborhood; two, the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted; three, extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect the nearby property; six, conformance of the requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive plan; eight, opposition or support of neighborhood residents. The rural, the rural residential character of the neighborhood dictates that the application for the proposed tower must be denied. This is wholly and unsuitable to the community. Removing the restrictions against a proposed tower will detrimentally affect all of the nearby homes, completely changing the character of the neighborhood. Allowing the tower to be constructed is antithetical to the community investment plan. The intent and purpose of the plan is to preserve quality of life in this community, and by extension, to maintain its character and unique environment. Lastly, the opposition of the neighborhood residents is clear and unanimous. Forty-five of the nearby homeowners have registered their opposition. The subject property is in Division Derby 2040 Comprehensive Plan. It is future Derby residential and green belt. It is 1,500 feet from the edge of Derby and 3,800 feet from the east edge of Division Derby 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The Derby Planning Commission voted to deny the application. All of these factors taken together make it clear the proposed tower does not meet the criteria of the conditional use. And I'd ask you to consider the rotary four-way test of the things we think, say, or do. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Harper. I don't see any questions, so thank you for your comments. Next up is Janine Harper, followed by David Siler, Seeler, sorry. Okay. Selsler, sorry, that didn't, couldn't read it. Morning, Janine.
Good morning. My name's Janine Harper, 7010 South 99th Street East in Derby, Kansas. As in the Court of Appeals of the State of Kansas versus Gump, the function of the planning commission is advisory only. The court found the city was entitled, under the law, to make its determination on the aesthetics. It further says that the benefit or harm involved to the community at large and had exercised its discretion to decide on that basis. The master plan, the Telecommunications Act, the Golden Rule, are all within the legal and justifiable reasons to deny a request for conditional use. It is within the power of the legislature to determine that the community should be beautiful as well as healthy, spacious as well as clean. It is ample to lay out zones where family values, youth values, and blessings of clean air and sanctuary for people. The zoning here, of course, is not aesthetic in the sense that it purports to control the appearance of the plaintiff's property. The objective thought is the exclusion of commercial uses in a residential area. Cell towers are infamous for depreciating the value of residential properties up to 20%. The depreciation of human health is even more detrimental. The aggregate of radiation, and if I may, I would like to put these down real quick. They're supposed to be up, sorry. The aggregate of radiation from Sony antennas polluting the air close to inhabited buildings is never monitored by the local, state, or the federal authority for the protection of health. Each antenna on the pole emits its own pattern of microwave signals propagated in its own set of wavelengths. We have DNA bursting frequencies, power densities invading our buildings and bodies, 24 We have DNA bursting frequencies, power densities invading our buildings and bodies twenty-four-seven. Radiation experts in electronic warfare confirms that the high cell cell tower frequencies are exceptionally dangerous for humans. This is not perceived, and it's not alleged, but factual knowledge. The FCC does not monitor any communications installations for RF compliance. There are no federal mandate for RF exposure standards. They issue licenses for whole regions and don't even know where the half the towers are. Numerous published studies indicate that the most accurate bioeffects are suffered by antenna irradiated populations living within five-hundred meters or six-hundred-and-twenty-five feet of antenna installations. The hardest hit are the segments of the population caught in the beam patch areas. This is a confluence of energy with the highest field. It's also important to note that the sixty-six twenty-nineteen subsection fourteen, of which you speak, does not have the word "health" in it. One must ask themselves, why does the FCC not want the dangerous effects of radiation to be revealed to the public? I think we all know the answer to that question. So the interpretation of this statute is to ignore the thousands of experts and therefore human welfare and safety be damned. Thank you very much for your time, and I ask that you deny this with all my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Question, Mr. Howell?
This is a question for staff, actually. And I've heard, I think, twice now, different people referencing the Telecommunications Master Plan. Is there information in the backup material that references that in any way with this proposed use?
If you're referring to the Wichita Cedric County Wireless Master Plan...
I don't know what they're referring to exactly, but they've, a couple of people have already referred to it. They call it Telecommunications Master Plan. I don't know if that's...
We do reference the Wichita Cedric County Wireless Communications Plan
Okay.
...in the staff report.
Where is that on there?
That is underneath the Conformance with Plans.
Okay.
And in fact, let me take you to that. So we have a brief discussion in this section just before the January nineteenth staff report, which talks about the Wireless, Wichita Cedric County Wireless Communications Plan encourages providers to locate towers in wooded areas, and goes through a discussion about the height of the tower and the height of the trees. We also have a discussion from the January nineteenth, on the section of the January nineteenth staff report, about the height and the implications related to the Wireless Communication Plan. But the Wireless Communication Plan limits the height of towers in rural residential district that can be approved by administrative permit to a hundred-and-twenty feet in height. And so because of that, that's why the conditional use is required. Also, it's also required because this is outside an area that is identified for administrative approval of communication towers in the Wireless Communications Master Plan. And so for both the location and the height, that is what is requiring the conditional use.
Okay, thank you.
And I would also note quickly that there's additional conversation about the Wireless Communication Plan and what it would have to say about this particular application. But that is contained, it was contained in the staff report to the MAPC. And so in your packet, it would be contained in the minutes from the MAPC meeting. There's just prior to the dialogue in that section, there is a copy of the staff report. And so there's a paragraph in there that addresses the Wireless Communication Plan.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Dave Selsor. Sorry, I mispronounced your name earlier. Next up is Kimberly, not sure, Harper.
My name's Dave Selsor, live at seven-one-one-four South Ninety-Ninth East. I'm the closest one to this tower. I also live in a treehouse, I'm fifty feet up. I'll be the first one microwaved by this thing. But the reason I'm here today is we've done some research in the fact that I've said that I'm going to provide part of this property to the city of Derby. It's a very historical place, and I provided a package that showed the age of this place. It was actually purchased in seventeen, or I mean, I'm sorry, nineteen, eighteen-seventy-one. The deed is in that package. It was also signed off by Ulysses S. Grant. It's a very historical place, one of the very first places in this area. So the past of Derby is located right here. And what I've been trying to do is work with the community of Derby. I've been with the Historical Museum, who's been providing information on this place. And also very helpful, the Register of Deeds has done research for me to get a list of the people involved. And there's a lot of ancestral people, some in this crowd, that are on this property. And there's a list of them behind the deed of that property. There is, we are, as part of this effort, going to try to get the place on the National Historic Register. To do that, there's a lot of hoops to jump through. But also, in that section, it talks about cell towers and the effect on national historic places, which I think it would be, because what we're trying to do is create a historical wellness park in this area, and this tower would not do any good for something like that. So that's all I have to say. Any questions?
Okay, any questions for Mr. Selsor? I don't see any. Thank you, sir. Next up is Kimberly Harper, and followed by Jim Inkalar. Okay, sorry about that.
Good morning. My name is Kimberly Sharon Harper. I live at nine-four-five-one South Woodlawn Boulevard, Derby. How can it be proven that people don't want houses near cell towers? Because most people don't buy houses located near cell towers. If they do, it's usually at a significantly reduced price. Four letters written by real estate professionals have been submitted that describe the negative effect this tower will have on surrounding property values. Beyond this, it's intuitively obvious that property values in large lot suburban areas are much more likely to be affected due to the stark contrast between the proposed tower and the existing surroundings. The proposed cell tower doesn't meet guidelines and therefore is much more likely to affect property values. The presence of this proposed tower will forever change the character of this residential neighborhood to commercial-industrial. It's not consistent with the Derby Comprehensive Plan. It's certainly not consistent with the landscape and the surroundings that suburban large lot areas provide. It completely diminishes the value and aesthetic appeal of the property. Please vote no to deny this overreaching cell tower. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Don't see any. Next up is Jim Inkalar, and next will be Rick Coleman. Morning, sir.
I'll start off by saying thanks for the job you guys do. And I know it's tough decisions, and I know you can't, each one of you always agree with us, but I appreciate the job you do. Start off with the real estate comparables. I wished I had the list in front of me because I could pick it apart in a minute. A water tower is not comparable to a hundred-and-ninety-five-foot cell tower with numerous and hundred-and-fifty-foot towers is not comparable. And we all know that in today's real estate market, we set a price and expect people to basically bid beyond that price. And we're not, and there's no comparable, there's comparables on their list that show us what other homes in that same area sold for. So it's not valid. They're not valid comparables. We all know that cell towers will change property values, especially when it's a hundred-and-ninety feet tall. The other thing is, I would just like to remind you again that Fringe University's clock tower is a hundred-and-fifty-eight feet tall and can be seen in all directions for miles. This cell tower is going to be forty feet taller than that. So just keep that in mind. This is not just a cell tower. I know that, I know that we have cell towers scattered all over, and this is not really about cell towers in general. This is about a cell tower that is ridiculously tall, that's going to show from miles and miles away. It's just, it's going to be a huge sore thumb. And you guys do have the right to say no, and I hope that you will. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? I don't see any. Next up is Rick Coleman, followed by Stan Hancock.
Rick Coleman, one-thousand-three East Madison Avenue in Derby, Kansas. Like Jack Caslip, I am on the city council, but I'm here to speak to you as a private citizen. A little background, I am a U.S. Air Force veteran, and I was a Communication and Navigation Systems Specialist. So I'm very attuned and trained in the negative effects of RF energy. And I know that you can't use environmental, but I want to just explain the actual limits for maximum permissible exposure that's in the regulation that's being referenced. There are different limits for exposure. Basically, for occupational controlled exposure, the limits that are listed in the table of one-dot thirteen-oh-one E-one limits occupational exposure to less than or equal to six minutes. For general population and uncontrolled exposure, the limit is less than thirty minutes. So my question is, if you have a tower that is in a residential neighborhood, you can't limit residents to less than thirty minutes exposure. There's a lot of negative side effects of RF energy: headaches, muscle pain, nose bleeds. I'll use my family as an example. I live right next to the Derby Football Stadium. The maximum limit of exposure is one-thousand milliwatts. Let me look it up so I give you the exact number. One-thousand milliwatts per centimeter squared. So it takes into account the person's density that's being exposed. I have pictures on my phone of radiation in my backyard that was one-million-nine-hundred-thousand milliwatts. So there is no regulation on this. There is regulation on it, there's no follow-through from the government to check these towers for their transmissivity. I would just, I mean, sixty years ago, doctors told clients that cigarettes were healthy, and if you had headache, smoke a cigarette. And now cigarettes are pretty much close to illegal because we've recognized the negative side effects of it. So I'm just imploring you to deny this, and please put the public's health at the forefront of your decision. I'll stand for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. I don't see any questions at this time. And Stan Hancock is our last speaker.
And first of all, I'd like to add my thanks to you for serving our county and our communities. I know it's a tough, tough job, and we're glad that you're here, willing to make these tough decisions. Again, all of the opposition speakers that have gone before me have very eloquently stated how this does not fit. It does not fit in the current environment that it's being, trying to be placed into. And aesthetically, it doesn't fit. The height of it compared to everything else in Cedric County, and I think you guys have already got a list of all those towers, doesn't fit. Health-wise, I know there's some debate on the health, but I've got an article right here that was just published April twenty-ninth on a recent case of severe microwave syndrome reveals the problems with 5G. And it goes on to state case studies, not on human beings yet, but on animals, where they were exposed for twenty minutes, five times a week, and had severe health problems after a month. This thing's going to be twenty-four-seven. All of us that live right around that, within a half a mile of it, are ground zero. So anyway, I think that the research and everything that's been stated would point you to make the correct decision to deny it, but I'd like to ask you that you would vote nay and deny this request. Thank you very much. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. I don't see any questions. Okay, with that, that will, we will now close the public comment on this item and return this item back to the commission and the bench. Any questions so far, or any courtesy, the applicant, staff, anything, summaries? Okay. Okay. Commission, comments, questions? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank the public today for coming in and being very polite. I appreciate that very much. We run a very, we try to have a very professional organization here, and I think that your comments were very professional across the board. And I do understand your concerns. I'm president of my homeowners association, and we recently had a case that was very contentious, and I've never seen three-hundred protests in one case, but we had three-hundred protests in that one case, so we're fairly familiar with having concerns brought about from the community. But we also, we have to comply with the Comprehensive Plan, and I know that you've taken a look at it, but I don't see that the Comprehensive Plan is in violation. We have to comply with the zoning regulations, and I know that you've taken a look at those. We have to comply with the Golden Rules. And several of you have mentioned health respects on that. Every single one of us have one of these in our pockets, so I don't know if we're that concerned about the health if we're carrying it around in our pocket all the time. But we can't consider the health. There's a lot of things we can't consider as we move through this. And I do appreciate your passion, and I know that you've got a lovely area to live in, but we have very, very strict rules that we have to live by. And so I hope you understand, but I make a motion that we adopt the findings of the Metropolitan Planning Commission, approve the requested conditional use, and sign the resolution and authorize the resolution to be published. Thank you.
Okay. There's a motion. Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate every member that was here today to share. I have a question. Kirk, you might be best for this question. I'm anguishing, trying to make sure I'm staying within the context of what I'm allowed to consider. We've heard it referenced, I'm reading staff report about the City of Derby Planning Commission. They recommended denial of the request five to three. Part of the golden factors is the recommendations of permanent professional staff. Are we allowed to take into consideration Derby Planning Commission? Are they considered permanent or professional staff in this matter?
Kirk's Assistant County Counselor. No, they would not be considered professional staff. It would be the Metropolitan Area Planning Department that you would consider. And you could potentially make the argument of maybe the Derby's planning department, but we're talking about their planning commission, and they don't fall under that categorization.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Well, I just have a few questions for our legal counsel. I'm reading this state law, and all the reasons why we're not allowed to consider all the things they have listed here. So just as a summary, I'm not allowed to consider approval or denial based on the height of the tower, is that correct? Is that correct?
That, that is a nuanced question. And the reason I say that is because you can't consider the height as related, as related to aviation and in terms of relation to airports, things of that nature. Potentially, height might be considered part of aesthetics, which could potentially be considered. But there is a limitation that you can't do, impose unreasonable requirements on aesthetics. So...
Yeah, that's, again, that's, I'm also wondering that because number 10 under F10 says I can't impose unreasonable requirements or obligations regarding the presentation, appearance, or function of the wireless. And I think that gets to the issue of, if the FAA has signed off on this, okay, they're okay with it. So I don't like, if I don't like the way it looks, am I allowed to say, you know, I wanna, I wanna vote no because I don't like the way it looks?
So that'd be part of the consideration for aesthetics. And with how this is framed, in consideration of aesthetics, it must be reasonable, which is also consistent with how, with how you should be applying your determinations in general, is a reasonable standard. So if you did want to deny on the basis of aesthetics as part of your considerations, I would recommend that you provide the underlying basis for that. You know, why, why you have concerns about this, what potential impacts there are, things of that nature, to flesh it out to the point that we hit a reasonable, reasonableness of your considerations.
Okay. And nowhere in the presentation, nowhere in the backup material, have I heard anybody tell us, what is the transmission power of this, of this cell tower? What's the transmission power rated at? I, I know about the frequency because I think that's listed in public domain. But I'm curious about, what is the power level of this tower? Does anybody have that?
If we may have a second? We don't have that. And I, I'm, quite frankly, I'd have to look again through the statute to see if that could be considered.
Yeah. Well, again, it talks about the function of the wireless facility. So I guess if, if the power wasn't very high, it probably wouldn't work very good. If it's, if it's very, very powerful, it has a longer range, I'm going to assume. It may be working at a farther distance, but... So I'm not allowed to consider the function of the tower. I'm not allowed to... I know you went through quite a lot of documents there to make a case for the issue of health. I, I, again, I'll have to respectfully disagree with you on that. I think the plain language of the law does, does not mention health. And if, if really that's what their intent was, they should have added that pretty easily. I'll go back to one point I'll make. The 2016, when the state legislature passed this law, this was a, an effort to empower the companies that put these towers up to have a greater success of putting these towers up. Because prior to 2016, a lot of governments didn't like these towers in certain locations. And people get involved in recommending locations, recommending tower heights, recommending aspects relating to how, you know, maybe the, the range of the tower, things like that. So there was a lot of debate back in 2016, the state passed this law, this we've been referencing this morning. And as I'm reading this, I'm gonna make a point here, and you may not like my question at the end of this, but as I read this, it seems like they've sealed up this thing so tight that there's no way I can vote no. I, I am probably gonna vote no, based on a couple, I'll make, I'll make a couple of points as to why I'll vote no. But if this, you know, if, if this is intended to make it so I can't vote no, then I'm gonna recommend MAPC to bring back a resolution to, to make these approved by state law. Because we don't, one of my frustrations has been that as an elected official, we ought to have the decision authority in our own affairs, if things are going in our, in our jurisdiction. We ought to have some authority to make decisions. And the state has gone through great effort to take this decision away from us, to the point where I'm not sure I can even vote no legally. And I, I'm concerned about, they've gone so far that I don't really have a decision that I can make legally. I'm gonna tell you, I may, I may ask, I may go ahead and make that decision just to see what happens, if nothing else. I, I, I believe there's reasons for me to vote no today. I think the aesthetics is a concern. I think this is a residential area. So it's an industrial-looking device in an industrial area. I am concerned, not personally so much, let me clarify this. I'm not concerned personally about the health effects, but I am concerned for the people who, this is a taking of their property because they are very concerned about the health to a point where they can't enjoy their property the way they have in the past. This is a taking of their property because they're, they're convinced, and they have a right to be convinced, they have a right to have an opinion on whether this impacts their health or not. And I think they made several arguments today, things like asbestos and cigarettes and other things where the government hasn't been right in the past. Now, suddenly, they discover later on that maybe things weren't what they thought a long time ago. So, you know, we're learning more things about, you know, exposure risks and health effects and things like that as, as time goes on. So to the extent that the property owners are convinced, I, I have respect for them enough to say they have a right to be protected. My job is to protect them as, as their elected official. So I... If I was gonna use an extreme example, if this tower was right next to someone's home and it had 10 times more power than they are planning to use, what in the law would give me the right to deny that? Other words, we all know that's, that's an extreme example. That would not happen. No one would propose a tower that's 20 feet tall and, and 50 feet from someone's house that's got this, you know, 10 times more power than this. We would think that's a bad, that's a, that's a bad, that's a bad plan. But what in the law would give me the right to say no in that case? I don't think there is anything, any different than this one. So I think the law is, I think the law is written very sloppily. I, I think that the reality is, I have the right to respect my constituents and their opinion about issues of health. I, I, I think that's actually a stronger argument than the issues of aesthetics, personally. Because aesthetics says, I don't like the way it looks, but that's someone else's property. And I think, again, I, I think I can make an argument, this is an industrial-looking device in a, in a residential neighborhood. This is Derby's growth area. But having said that, the issue of health, in my personal opinion, is a, is a bigger argument because I'm taking someone's property away. It's almost like if I had a, a farm where there was an odor that's going across the property lines, they couldn't use their property because of the odor that was outside their property. That would be a taking of their property. This is like that. In fact, this is transmitting something across the property line onto someone else's property. So that's my reason for voting no. I, I've said enough already. I'm gonna, I, I hate this case. I want it to go away. I'm, I'm gonna be voting no this morning. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? I will, there's a motion on the floor to approve, and I will second that motion. Any other comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Regretfully, aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner, Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you all, the citizens, very respectful comments today. So I'll let it take a minute for... And we will go to the next item, please. Go ahead.
Item S, acceptance of a donation totaling $320 for the Sedgwick County Department on Aging.
Good morning, Commissioners. Annette Graham, Department on Aging. I bring before you today a, that the Department on Aging has received three donations in memory of Larry Dale Wright totaling $320. The donation funds will be used to support community outreach and education for older adults and caregivers in line with our mission as a department. The donations came from Ronald and Cindy Reese from Joplin, Missouri, John and Janice Sead from Valley Center, and Stefan and Jennifer Kelly out of Austin, Texas. I would recommend that you accept the donations, authorize the chairman to sign the letters of appreciation, and authorize establishment of budget authority. And we are very grateful to have received these donations in memory of this individual in our community.
Okay. Thank you, Annette. Is there any questions? It's very, very charitable of these people. So I don't see any questions. I'll make a motion that we accept the donation and authorize the chair to, to sign letters of appreciation and authorize establishment of budget authority.
Second. Thank you.
Motion and a second. Being no comment. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Annette, please extend our thanks to everybody. Next item, please.
Item T, island annexation A23 dash 03, request by the City of Wichita pursuant to City of Wichita Resolution Number 23 dash 171.
Okay. Kirk, good afternoon, morning?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kirk Sponsel, Assistant County Counselor. Here before you today is an island annexation requested by the City of Wichita. The City Wichita, the Wichita City Council approved Resolution 23 dash 171 for the island annexation of the property in question, which they then submitted to the county for consideration on April 26, 2023. Our state law, we have 30 days after the receipt of the resolution to make findings, which I will discuss in further detail later on in this presentation. An island annexation is when the property proposed to be annexed does not join the contiguous boundary of the city in question. And first, I'm gonna point out the maps to show the general area of the property. So this is the first map. It's kind of a zoomed in. The property in red is the proposed annexation. As you can see, the property slightly to the north, but not quite adjoining, is a separate City of Wichita island annexation. It's already part of the City of Wichita. This area is to the northeast of Rock and 39th Street. It consists of 58.24 acres of land that is currently zoned TF3, two-family residential district. This is a zoomed-out map, so it shows the area in relation to the City of Wichita boundaries. Also shows the Derby city boundaries. It's currently within the 5th District. In this situation, the property owner has specifically requested annexation. In your backup materials, you provide the City of Wichita annexation request application that was executed by the property owner. Metropolitan Area Planning Department staff previously reviewed the proposed annexation as part of the City of Wichita considerations concerning public services. The nearest water and sewer mains are less than a tenth of a mile to the north of the property in question, and they have the capacity to serve the proposed development. Police protection will be provided by the Patrol East Bureau of the Wichita Police Department. And as for fire protection, is currently provided to the area on the basis of a first responder agreement between the city and county, and the service will continue following the annexation. The proposed island annexation is consistent with the 2035 urban growth area designation for the City of Wichita as depicted on the 2035 Wichita Future Growth Concept Map within the comprehensive plan. The subject site is identified as appropriate for development in the new residential growth, new employment growth, and new residential and employment mix categories. State statute lays out the requirements in which an island annexation can take place. First, the land must be located within the same county as the city. The second is that the landowner's petition for or consent in writing to the annexation of the land. And third, that the Board of Commissioners of the county, by a two-thirds vote of the members thereof, find and determine that the annexation of the land will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or that of any other incorporated city located within the county. At this time, I have not received any concerns from county departments or from other municipalities. With that said, I would just like to verify, are there any formal representatives from the City of Derby here to speak on this item? And I see none. So the recommended action here is that you make the finding that the proposed annexation will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or that of any other incorporated city located in Sedgwick County, and therefore adopt the resolution. Now, with that said, is the will of the board to make any finding as you see fit? I'm happy to stand for questions, and MAPD is still also available for questions as well.
Okay. Thank you, Kirk. I know we were also briefed in more detail that was allowed to ask. And thank you for the, for the homework and for the presentation. Is there any questions? And I don't see any, so I'll make a motion to, yeah, find that the proposed annexation will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area or that of any other incorporated city located in Sedgwick County, and therefore adopt this resolution. There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? I don't see. Commissioner Lopez, did you have a comment?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Being no comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, Kirk. Next item, please.
Item U, consideration of a purchase agreement for the Envision parking lot.
Good afternoon, Mr. Diltz.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Andrew Diltz, Director of Facilities, here to present on the Public Safety Building Secure Parking. Couple of years ago, Public Safety presented concerns and issues with unsolicited encounters in the public safety parking lot. These encounters were occurring at each shift change, three times a day. We researched, we researched options to create safe environment where staff could come to work without being harmed or threatened. And the two options pursued included securing the parking lot with a fence and creating a law enforcement presence during shift change. County currently owns enough land for 32 parking stalls. During a shift change, around 65 stalls are required, a deficit of 33 stalls. To fulfill the parking deficit, we worked with NAI Martins, who was the county on-call realtor at the time, to contact our parking lot neighbor, Envision, and the county was presented an option to lease a portion of the Envision parking lot for approximately $70,000 a year, and at the county's expense, install and maintain a fence. Simultaneously, courthouse police officers and sheriff deputies have created a presence in this area as they travel to and from the downtown area, lowering the amount of encounters. However, the encounters are still occurring and at a high level. In a recent six-month period, approximately nine incidents occurred where law enforcement officers were dispatched. Revisiting the option to secure the parking lot with a fence, staff worked with Envision to remove the annual lease and outline details of license agreement. During these conversations, it became viable for Envision to sell the parcels, allowing the county to install and maintain infrastructure on land not owned by the private sector. As part of the purchase price of $325,000, Envision retains 15 unassigned parking stalls for a duration of 10 years. CBRE is representing the county on this purchase, and their commission, and their commission is in addition to the purchase price, plus closing costs split between the buyer and the seller. The budget for this purchase is on today's consent agenda as a CIP amendment and includes $178,366 to construct a fence and restart the parking lot. This makes our total budget $528,366. As you can see on the left, I have an aerial map of public safety and the parking lot that we own. We have two of them that are the blue rectangles that are county-owned. The one to the south of the building would be for public facing and will remain public facing. The blue to the, it'd be to our right side of the, the aerial photo would be currently owned for staff parking. And the red square below it are the Envision-owned parking lots that we are discussing purchasing. On the right side, you see a map. This is a tentative plan that we have to fence the parking lots. If you can follow along with my cursor, you can see that we'd have a, an exit gate here in the alley. The fence would extend all the way to Market Street, turn and go south to the corner of the, the parcels that we are discussing purchasing. It would turn and go back west to the alley, turn and go north, and we would have an entry gate there in the alley for staff to enter the parking lot. And I will stand for any questions. And I recommend authorizing the, the chairman to sign and approve the amendment.
Andrew, thank you for the presentation, and thanks for all the work. I know, I think each commissioner has been involved in trying to get a solution one way or another various times. And, and I thank the commission for, for always engaging and looking at all the options. My briefest to comment would be that we've got a lot of, we got a lot invested in 911 and our employees there. And I, I am very supportive of this because this adds, adds to Elora, the manager, to help secure her employees and, and recruit and retain. to help secure the, her employees and, and recruit and retain future employees. Keep, keep the good ones and, and recruiting. And safety, obviously, 20, 911 is a 24/7, Operation 365. And so coming in and out was very apparent to most all of us commissioners about the safety of our employees. Might be a little larger investment than we wanted to make, but I think it's, the safety outweighs the, everything we need to do to get this secured. Any other comments before I make a motion?
Just real briefly, first I want to thank Envision for working with us.
Yeah, thank you.
That was critical. Without them, we couldn't purchase this, and they worked with us each step of the way. So thank you very much to everybody that was involved. The chairman and I went over, just before we tore down 911 and took a look at it, talked with, with Elora. We've been listening to, to our staff and our employees over in 911. We know there are safety concerns, so that got us involved in this. I also want to thank Facilities because you've worked with us every step of the way. I know we've had a lot of discussions on this, and this is the right solution at the right time. So I just want to thank everyone. Thank you.
Commissioner Howe.
Thank you. I want to say I concur with the previous comments. I wanted to say thank you. You all did a great job. This is a very important facility to this community. They may not realize what goes on there, but it is incredibly important for our staff to be safe. And the location, we've invested so much money in this location already. Relocate this would be, I would say would be not in the best interest of the taxpayers. And so we, to find, to find a solution in that spot, this is a reasonably good solution. I appreciate Envision working with us, appreciate your leadership to get this deal made. And, you know, I thought about, what about a parking garage? You can, you can park vertically by adding different layers. Well, that would be a lot more money. I did the math just a minute ago. I'm thinking, this is a great deal, actually. It's a good solution to the problem, and I think that it's, it's time for us to move forward. Thank you again.
Okay, with that, I'll see other comments. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase agreement and authorize the chair to sign the agreement and any additional documents to effectuate such agreement, adopt the resolution, and authorize Tom Stoltz, Tim Kaufman, and/or Tanya Cole to execute and deliver any and all necessary documents required to effect and close the purchase of real property identified in Exhibit A.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thanks again, Envision neighbors and friends, and thanks for all the commissioners' involvement in getting this solution delivered. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Yes, manager.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items V through double letter AQ this afternoon.
Okay, Commissioners, you've had a chance to look at the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion that we approve consent items V through double letters AQ.
Second.
Motion and a second. Being no comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
I think we had legislative issues earlier. Let's move on, unless there's somebody. I don't see any, so we will move to the next item, please.
Committee reports.
Committee reports. Anybody have anything to report on committees? Oh, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, Tim Kaufman and Manager Stoltz and I attended the zoo board meeting. And one item I do want to bring up, and it may be appropriate after this meeting to have one of these drinks, but we, they have a plant, an agave plant over there that they've had for 35 years. And they've moved it all over the zoo. And suddenly, here a couple of months ago, it started having a huge shoot that came out of, out of that plant, and it's now probably 25 feet tall. And what that means is that it is pollinating, and once it pollinates, it dies. So it's kind of tragic, but the, the name of, it's agave, if anyone knows what you make out of that, is tequila. And so the name of the plant is Margarita. So if you have an opportunity to go over to the zoo in the near future, it's right behind the main building, and it won't be there forever because it will die after it pollinates, which is kind of tragic because the staff has been taking care of this plant for 35 years. So you have a short window to get over there and take a look at this plant. And as always, I recommend everyone belong to the zoo and tour it often. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Great story. Any other comments on committee reports? I don't see any. Next item, please.
Other.
Does anybody have anything under other to report? Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I met last week with, actually I attended the Derby Recreational Commission meeting that they had about a week, a week ago. And I know we have a transportation contract with Wichita to, to run some transportation buses through the Oconom community a couple of times a day, and it's about 35, 34, $35,000 a year. I would, I, I believe that contract does also anticipate some, some on-purpose transportation that they could put together, say, a group that wants to travel to Derby to do some shopping, for example, and provide that back and forth. I don't know, I don't know for sure that's in the contract right now, but they are, they are struggling as a community trying to find ways to get their, the residents to, to food supply, primarily either the Walmart or Aldi in Derby. And I don't know where we are with that contract, but I'd like to ask staff to please review that with me. I would like to invite the DRC, some of the folks there to sit down with us. They would, they actually have a news center called The Wellness Hub, and it is, it's a part of their DRC facility there on Clifton that the community can exercise opportunities to meet with other folks. It's, it's really more, more of a connector, a connector opportunity for all kinds of things just like this. And so they would like to put together some of those trips to Derby, exercise the option to get some folks opportunities to move to Derby, or to get to Derby to get their food and come back. And so the Derby DRC and that Wellness Hub, I think, is the perfect location to put together those trip outings. So with that, I'm asking staff for some help for, to, to get this figured out exactly where we are with this, and if we are not where we need to be, I'd like to have that assembled with, with, you know, help with the DRC's input and get something put together to present back to the commission to get this thing restarted, so to speak. So that's, that's all I want to say about that. Thank you so much.
Okay. I'll also comment that REAP, the Regional Economic Team that, that we are members of, are hosting at the Wind Surge baseball game tonight, hosting legislators, and we're all invited. And, and if we can make it, I'll be there to represent both county and, and REAP as well. That's tonight.
I'll be there as a legislative spouse.
Okay, all right. Okay. Any others, under others? Being none, next item, please.
Executive session.
We do not have executive session. And so does anything else need to come before the board? I don't see any, so we will stand adjourned.